Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the regular scheduled meeting of the City Council here in the Birmingham City Council chambers. The official starting time is 9:33 a.m. For our invocation this morning, we have Reverend Ricky L. Crapp, pastor of St. Luke Missionary Baptist Church, and I pledge allegiance to be done by Counselor Kimberly Rafferty. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father, Father of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we come to you on this morning thanking you for the platform of prayer. We thank you today, Father, even for the privilege of prayer, but most of all for the power that exists inside of prayer. Father, we pray that you would bless everyone up under the sound of my voice, bless this council, this administration, bless this city. We pray, Father, that you will continue to anoint the heads with wisdom, knowledge, and divine understanding. We pray, Father, just for creative ideas, and we pray for great leadership. We pray, Father, even for the protection of their families and our families. Father, protect this city, protect this country, and, Father, after it's all said and done, we'll be careful to give you all the honor, all the glory, and all of the praise and all of the people said. Amen.
And with grateful hearts, hands, and minds, we say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you Pastor Crapp, and thank you Counselor Rafferty. Ms. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Member Abbott.
Present.
Counselor Member Hoyt.
Present.
Counselor Member Lundey. Counselor Member Parker.
Good morning.
Morning. Counselor Member Rafferty.
Present.
Counselor Member Skiles. Counselor Member Tyson. President Austin, President Pro Tim Roper.
Present. Minutes not ready for March 17th, 2015 through May 19th, 2015. At this time, we have communications from the mayor. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Mr. Pro Tim, good morning, Counselors.
Good morning.
Over the weekend, it was announced that the city of Birmingham had received a bid to host the 2018 NOUSA conference right here in Birmingham, Alabama. I want to thank Mr. Jarvis Patton along with the rest of the members of the delegation that went there, along with all the neighborhood leaders. This is something that didn't just take place over the weekend, but it's been in the works for some time now, and we have a brief film that we want to show as to some of the activities. It may not be that brief, but we're going to show it.
Building tomorrow's neighborhoods today, Birmingham bold, Birmingham strong. Seated at the feet of the Appalachian Mountains emerges this beauty of a city. Once called the Pittsburgh of the South, we are a city where people genuinely do care about people, a place where neighbors still help neighbors.
When you come here, you'll see beautiful parks, you'll see beautiful museums, and all of the amenities that any city should have, and that's why we've taken this opportunity to invite the world to come and see the Birmingham that we are today.
The foundation of Birmingham is made up of 99 neighborhoods on the north, south, east, and western sides of town. Those neighborhoods are divided into 23 communities led by the Citizens Advisory Board, a group of everyday people who know the lay of the land, love the places where they live, and work hard to build a better Birmingham. Newly elected officers were sworn in in January of 2015 and connected with community resource representatives to help them fortify their neighborhood associations. City council members have a direct line of communication with the areas they serve and often host town hall meetings to keep a pulse on the issues.
The biggest asset that we have, outside of all of the amenities in the city of Birmingham, are the people. In our chambers, it says above the doors, the people are the city. That's the biggest asset that we have.
Our mayor even has an open door policy and sets aside time where citizens can come in and talk face to face. This city gives individuals platforms so their voices can be heard. This is Birmingham's 3-1-1. It is a dedicated staff whose sole job is to serve as a liaison conveying to city departments the needs of the people. Working in conjunction with the mayor's office of citizens assistance, it is a priority that these teams assist neighborhoods with their concerns. Local media and organizations like Rev Birmingham help get the word out online and in places where diverse cultures are living and working together. Open lines of communication are important, but stop, you may ask. How can they go along without acknowledging what we all may be thinking? We know it is what the world contemplates when they hear the name Birmingham. For many, our existence is only in black and white. This is the city where the civil rights movement was birthed and marched. Visions of dogs and water hoses are still etched in the minds of this nation. This too is a reminder of who we are, of where we've come from, and of where we have yet to go. For some, pain still linger from that fateful day when four little girls became martyrs. Two other young men were also taken away way too soon. Our history marked a perception that is sometimes too hard to shake, no matter how much good we do. That was Birmingham 50 years ago. Now, because of the giants whose shoulders we stand upon, we are empowered to envision a new Birmingham. As we continue our celebration of 50 years forward, we boldly embrace our future. We are building tomorrow's neighborhoods today. As evidenced in Birmingham's Civic Engagement Progress Report, we assessed ourselves through RISE, which means to remove blight, increase values, strengthen neighborhoods, and empower citizens. This blueprint gives neighborhoods a chance to address their needs and volunteer through public-private partnerships.
I am going to carry this information back to our neighborhood association so that everyone in the community and that our neighborhood will be knowledgeable about what's going on with the city and this RISE program.
Civic engagement is how individuals, groups, and businesses work together for the common cause of making a difference in their communities.
We have great people in our neighborhood, people who actually love Birmingham and love their neighborhood.
Our greatest example of that is through the Love Your Block Mini Grant Program. There, neighborhoods can apply for grants which give them a chance to transform empty lots, organize block cleanups, create safe environments, and get neighbors involved. Thanks to a grant from the Kaboom Organization and a partnership with PNC Bank, children in the Fairview and Arlington-West End neighborhoods now have a brand-new playground, and what's best of all is that they help design them. As a result of the Love Your Block grants, more than 5,000 volunteers have been mobilized, close to 100 blocks have been revitalized, and at last check, 30 of our 99 neighborhoods have been impacted, creating a sense of community pride through civic engagement. A partnership with the IBM Smarter Cities Challenge Team helped Birmingham identify communities with food deserts and roll out a solution. Transit buses went through a transformation, and just a few weeks ago, our first mobile food markets hit the streets. It's a low-cost alternative to grocery stores that some neighborhoods simply don't have access to. Now, healthy foods are en route to people who need it most. Also nestled in the heart of downtown for an entire block is Jones Valley Urban Farm, a place where farmers work with students and community gardeners, planting and harvesting over 200 varieties of flowers, vegetables, and fresh fruits. In the areas of business and economic development in Birmingham, there is growth with hundreds of new jobs on the horizon. Our new region's baseball field is a venue for both sports enthusiasts and family fun. Just across the street is magnificent use of green space at Railroad Park, where you'll find diverse crowds enjoying an afternoon picnic or a healthy run. At the Birmingham Crossplex, the Nautatorium hosts collegiate and local swimming meets. The SIAC basketball tournament is also held at this neighborhood facility, as well as the NCAA indoor track and field events. We keep it community-driven by hosting the Alabama High School Athletics Association Championships and showcasing our hometown youth. At the city's hottest new venue, the Uptown Entertainment District, you'll find new jobs, delicious food, and a place for grown-ups to play after work. But what about the children? Well, Birmingham makes a significant investment grooming our neighborhood leaders of the future. Out of a concern several years ago about the issues plaguing young people, the mayor's office Division of Youth Services was born. We are one of very few locations in the United States and the only municipality in Alabama where city government has set aside a division specifically for young people. Through areas such as cultural arts, education, faith-based initiatives, and family services, DYS addresses issues such as mentoring and bullying and opens dialogue between youth, their families, and their communities. We even have our own mascot named Sid. He is childlike, super cool, and loves to teach the Sid Shuffle. DYS goes into the neighborhoods and puts young people on the front end of the decision-making process. We also introduce them to life experiences by allowing them to apply for their first job as early as age 14 through the Kids and Jobs Program. It prepares our youth for the workforce and teaches them the importance of their attitude, appearance, and filling out an application. When you're charged with knowing more, you can do more. DYS has the capability to create replicable models of this office, one of the reasons why Birmingham is proud of its designation as 100 Best Communities for Young People. Let us take a few moments to show you how our neighborhoods are evolving thanks to public-private partnerships. Because of a grant for North Birmingham, this masterpiece was created, each stroke painted by the gentle hands of Carver High School students. This mural will serve as a lasting reminder why it is so vital that we keep our neighborhoods a beautiful and safe place for our children to live and play. Neighborhood development is also flourishing in areas like West End Manor, where you'll find a new green space, a new shed, and a community vegetable garden. Birmingham continues its efforts to make sure areas are accessible, and we now have new curbs cut on Pearson Avenue, thanks to the teamwork making city sidewalks ADA compliant. Recently, the Enslie community opened its doors to new mixed-income level housing as part of the HOPE 6 program. That's also where you'll find the annual Tuxedo Function at the Junction, a neighborhood jazz celebration, and there are festive days galore like this one in Bush Hills. In District 8, Party With a Purpose has drawn national acclaim for its ability to rally together Enslie's neighbors, corporate partners, and friends. And only in Birmingham is Dudade, an annual celebration that's for the dogs, literally. The festival includes everything from a doggy parade to a fashion show. On to Central Park, where this neighborhood adores its new walking track and Learning Tree Park. HUD is also to thank for a new housing development in the Fountain Heights community, and our libraries are seeing new social development through citizens learning how to use a computer for the very first time. Thanks to the Keep Birmingham Beautiful Commission, blight is on the decrease while growth is on the increase. If ever there is an example of how Birmingham handled a disaster and turned it around, Pratt City is the best model we have. On April 27th, 2011, the country watched as a devastating tornado hovered over Birmingham's city center. When the winds finally shifted, entire neighborhoods were ripped apart. Our mayor sadly looked over the damage and said Pratt City will rise. By faith, she did.
I feel like our neighborhood is coming back. It's gonna take time, but it looks so much better.
Neighbors brought support from over the mountain and beyond, and the government's Tiger Grant helped us to rebuild. Like a phoenix out of the ashes, now you see a new Pratt City neighborhood, new because of new homes and sidewalks, a brand-new library, a new fire station, senior housing, and safe places. Neighborhood presidents and leaders joined with city council members and the corporate community, and because of those partnerships, places like this are seeing significant improvement. Birmingham takes care of all of its communities, not just the 99 we mentioned, but the ones with no direct address at all, our homeless community. When temperatures dipped below freezing in the early months of 2015, the city of Birmingham made sure its homeless citizens were kept safe and warm in the Boutwell Auditorium. Businesses and houses of faith not only prepared and delivered hot meals for their homeless, but some of them even stay to serve because Birmingham cares about all of its citizens.
All the food that we collect, all the jackets, the coats, the blankets, all that stuff is given to us by our citizens, and we live in a great community.
And it did not stop there. Welcome to Project Homeless Connect. Each spring, nonprofits such as One Roof, The United Way, Hands on Birmingham, and this city partner together for a common cause. The doors of the same Boutwell Auditorium that functioned as shelter from the cold on this day operates as a one-stop shop for Birmingham's homeless citizens to receive services they don't normally have access to. You'll find everything from dental checkups and eye exams to haircuts and legal aid. Thousands of agencies and dedicated volunteers say this is a very rewarding experience. Clients who come in with literally all their belongings in one bag leave out with dignity and a smile. A life-changing program evolved from Project Homeless Connect. It's called Turning Point Court. It is made up of legal teams who continuously work to help our homeless citizens and veterans clear their records and get a fresh start. Cities are strongest when neighbors look out for each other. Our Neighborhood Policing and Revitalization Division has a motto that says, "Breathing New Life Into Birmingham, One Neighborhood at a Time." Safe neighborhoods give us a secure way to enjoy places we love, places like Birmingham's walking trails. One of them is Sloths Furnaces. This unique urban trail weaves through giant smokestacks that line Birmingham's industrial iron past. There is also the Birmingham Civil Rights Heritage Trail, where you can walk through historic sites such as the Civil Rights Institute and 16th Street Baptist Church. In Birmingham, we are tackling the issues head-on. We do that with a clear understanding of the new submission, which is to build and strengthen neighborhood associations and to promote productive communication among the public and private sector. Government is born out of the neighborhood, from leaders who have a genuine passion to We welcome all to Birmingham, and while you are here, let us show you our growth, as well as areas where we could use your help to improve. No city's problems are new, but when we sit down together, our common goal is to share replicable models we can all use to grow good neighborhoods into great cities. The invitation is extended. Come and see how Birmingham is building tomorrow's neighborhoods today. Help us show the world that in the city of Birmingham, change has finally come.
Mr. Pro Tim, oftentimes, you know, when we deal with the day-to-day issues that face our city, you know, the potholes, the abandoned homes, and overgrown lights, we forget the work that we do, and this film captures a lot of the things that this council, this mayor, this city government have been working on that have come to fruition. We realize that our work is not over with, but I want to thank everyone who had a part in taking this message to the other cities at the NOUSA conference, and I want to ask them to come up. Kathy, Sybil, y'all, come on up. Please give them a round of applause.
Well, thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Mr. Patton, and the council. As the mayor stated earlier, this has been an ongoing process. It's been going on for about a year now, and it culminated on this past Saturday at the NOUSA conference in Houston, Texas, and I must say that I just, I think we did a marvelous job. We can toot our own horn. Florency and Sybil were instrumental in getting the delegation together and a lot of what was put together, and as you saw in the presentation, a lot of hard work has gone into it, and we were just happy to get the bid for the 2018 NOUSA conference here. So Flo, if you'd like to come up and say something, Sybil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just have a short speech. Mr. Patton spoke about bidding for the 2017 conference, and my words to Mr. Patton was, "Mr. Patton, you need to hurry up and talk to the mayor because we need to go ahead and get to work on this thing." So he asked me to facilitate the bid. I had a vision for this team, and this team, along with good leadership, Mr. Patton, made this vision their own vision, and that what we needed to make this a successful bid, and we appreciate Mr. Patton, we appreciate this team. I just want to announce the names right quick. All the people who were on this team, Mr. Jarvis Patton, Melva Langford, Andre Willie Watson, Harry Giddens, he was the Budget Committee co-chair, George Lee, Silver Scarborough, she was the Video Committee Chair, Pamela Smith, Susan Palmer, the Book Committee Chair, Kathy Perdue, Florency Underwood, the facilitator, Bill Conway, the Video Committee co-chair, Terry Burney, the Budget Committee Chair, Lisa Cooper, Michael Shine, the Book Committee co-chair, Bacara Maudon, Jose Perry Jr., Carolyn Johnson, and Marcus Watts, and I want to say thank you to this awesome team.
Good morning, everyone, to the mayor, council. I just want to say thank you for being allowed to work on the project. That video was absolutely a labor of love, and when I first started on it, I realized that there was nowhere in the city that I could find something that had all the good stuff that we're doing in one place, so it took a lot of research, it took a lot of time, it took, Mr. Patton literally terrifying me when he gave me the assignment and said, "Get it done." And when the chief says, "Get it done," there are no ifs, ands, or buts, you just get it done, so I especially thank the council staff, who, they were tremendous, Kiara, Brian Wallace, Brittany, all of them were so helpful, and this is the one tangible thing that we have that we can show, that the council and the mayor's office worked on together, and that is something to be proud of. One thing to say, when we ended our presentation in Houston, they had absolutely no questions. The clock was ticking, the little guy was holding up the little timesheet, and they had to look in the book and try to find something, and pretty much the only thing they could come up with to ask us was, "Well, how many miles does it take to get from the airport to the hotel?" So we are very pleased, we thank every single one, and I am just blessed and honored to have had the opportunity to work with this team as well, so thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council. I'm George Lee, I'm a NOUSA board member. I didn't have the pleasure of seeing the video or even judging the video, but I do bring back greetings for NOUSA. The video was exceptional. I must say that all our board members liked it as well, but it was, it was another competing video, of course. But I just want to thank the council and thank the mayor's office for their due diligence and putting together such a wonderful video to showcase Birmingham, showcase our wonderful city and what we do right here in Birmingham, so that we can bring the delegates here so they can see what we have, how we have transformed. Let's just say that. From 1963 to now, what a transformation. So thank you again for, you know, allowing us to serve, and thank you for allowing us to be here.
Well, again, thank, thank all of you all, and you've done a yeoman's job, and we appreciate all the hard work, and we still got a lot of work because when they get here, we got to really show them the real Birmingham, so thank you all so much.
Mayor Bill? Yes. We have a couple of speakers from the council. Counselor Abbott?
I just wanted to congratulate you all for the excellent job that you did. I know that it was hard work, and I know it was probably outside y'all's normal jobs, but you did a great job, and it's so exciting when you want something, you go after it and you get it. You know, there's no better feeling, so I congratulate all of you on doing a wonderful job. You got it.
I'll call it myself real quick. First of all, I'm glad you got out of Houston before the storm hit and the floods, and I'm glad you made it back home safely. Secondly, I believe I can improve the NOUSA budget in 2017 without any problems, Mayor. Be a cheap, cheap trip for us to down the street to Sheridan. But lastly, looking at the video, and like the mayor said, reflecting on all that's been accomplished, some of us were elected 2009, six years, been on the council, and it was like, wow, to see the strides that we've made as a city, to see the accomplishments we've made, the growth that we've made during tough times, the tornadoes, to come back and bring Pratt City back, so you don't, you really don't realize when you're tied up in the day-to-day how much you can get accomplished with good work, good effort, working collectively, together to make things possible, so that was very, the video was awesome. It was awesome, and we commend you all for your efforts and leadership in going to H-Town and bringing the NOUSA back to the B in Birmingham. So thank you all for your efforts, and we appreciate all that you're doing. I think we have one more speaker. Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning to all. I'm just excited. I mean, I don't think I've ever seen a video put together, as I saw one this morning, and it's no wonder that you won, but I think people need to know that NOUSA is a very vital organization, and they are serious about neighborhoods. It's not just you just put a presentation together, but they actually go through it with a fine coof, teeth comb. I know when I went there and presented, they wanted to see the signing sheet, they wanted to see the newspaper articles, they wanted to see all that, so I do know how intense that process is, and for those who always criticize folk from going to NOUSA, NOUSA is this wonderful place that empowers, that certainly gives you new vision about how you need to deal with neighborhoods, but we also bring something. Birmingham has a steep tradition in bringing something new to NOUSA all the time, and so I want to say kudos to you, to Mr. Patton. I know he wanted this more than anything, and I'm glad that we got it. Mr. Mayor, I think it speaks to real leadership, and so I want to thank you and your staff, and thank central staff for participating, and I think Brian and Brittany and her team are the best that we could have in City Hall proper because they know how to get it done, so thank you all again. George, so good to see you, sir. I'm glad you stood on the board, so I know we had your vote, so we appreciate that. And Bill Conway, you just surprised me because I'm used to a beard, and now you clean-faced it, so I had to look again, and I didn't know you were still here, but you're here. We appreciate you and all the work that you have done, so thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. President Pro Tim.
Thank Counselor Hoyt. Counselor Tyson?
Yes, I wanted to make sure that I wish y'all, you know, just, I'm just happy that we was able to get it, and George, me and George have been a long ways with the NOUSA conference, and I know Party With a Purpose won one of the year's awards, but Arlington West End won two years and an honorable mention, but we never had anyone to really toot our horn. We won two years of honorable mention.
I just mentioned one, we won two.
But we never had anyone to toot our horn, but I want, but even in the past, I want to make sure that, that everyone know a lot of ordinances, a lot of projects came from NOUSA, and that's when I was a, when I was in our neighborhood officer's position, I fought so hard for people to go to NOUSA even though I- so hard for people to go to NUSA even though I only went a couple of times. I didn't go all the time because I knew if someone else went, they would have more fresh ideas than the same person going all the time and they could bring more back to the community. And it's a, it's something that is needed, especially for large cities with problems. And you get a chance to go to other cities and see what they did to improve their neighborhood and we can come back and implement it here. And hats off to you and job well done.
Thank you, Counselor Tyson. One more question real quick. We got this card here, Florency, with a chip in it. Is that a credit card, is it? What is it?
It's a flash drive.
Flash drive. Okay. Counselor Abbott, now a wonderful one. Thank you so much for the kind gift. Thought I'd go charge it up, but thank you so much. Well, thank you all again. Mayor?
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Great job, great job. For four years, the city of Birmingham, the Birmingham to Beijing Project has partnered with sister cities to provide high-quality Chinese lessons to local students. These lessons were originally based out of Carver High School and are now open to all students across Birmingham City Schools. The lessons allow students to study written and spoken Chinese and to take tests to certify their proficiency. Over the past four years, the cumulative rates of proficiency has averaged over 95%. The group raises funds for the lessons and the trip expenses and the sister cities is a major sponsor of these programs. While in Beijing this summer, the students will visit our friendship city of Chao Yang in the Chao Yang District and study with local Chinese students. And if our council president is still over there, they'll bring him back. Teach for America participant Wyatt Smith started the program and the baton was passed on to Devon Cantwell. We have with us today Devon Cantwell and our scholar ambassadors to China. Scotty?
That pretty much summed it up. This is something we're very proud of. Those of y'all who know me know I've worked with a lot of different international groups over the years and after a while you begin to pick up some of the language, but I've worked with the Chinese probably more than any other group and I have no idea what they're talking about. Chinese is a difficult language. When I see these young people in their language classes learning Chinese, it gives me two feelings. One, proud, and the other one, I feel dumb. But, but it is, it is truly remarkable what we've been able to do with this on fundraising and grants. And I'd like to present you the straw that stirs the drink for this program, Devon Cantwell.
Devon?
Good morning. Thank you so much for your invitation to come present at today's city council meeting and thank you so much for your continued support over the last four years. I just want to give you a little bit of history about our program, where we're looking forward vision-wise in the next five years, and then tell you a little bit about our experience this summer before closing with a couple of statements from our students. First, our program, as Mr. Coulson stated, has been going for four consecutive years now. We are, I would venture probably one of the few groups that takes student, that have taken students for four consecutive years. There are many wonderful programs that have been able to provide intermittent opportunities for study abroad and language studies, but we've been able to maintain that with a level of consistency. And I am not quite as tall as him. And some of our accomplishments, as Mr. Mayor stated, was we have over a 95% proficiency rate, an internationally recognized proficiency rate for our students. This is a huge accomplishment. This means that if they were to ever go and study at a university in China, they would be internationally recognized as Mandarin speakers. And this level of proficiency will open many doors to them in the future. Speaking of the future, our vision for the future includes many things. First, we would like to get a full-time instructor. Currently, our students are working their butts off Tuesdays and Thursday afternoon and they do this as an after-school program. They don't get high school credit for this, they don't get college credit for this. They get the opportunity to study abroad in the summer, but they certainly receive no actual course credit at the time. We would like to get a full-time instructor within Birmingham City Schools and become a cultural language center for the state of Alabama. This would allow a new level of prestige for our city schools here in Birmingham and open access for critical language for literally hundreds of students. Additionally, we hope to continue a cultural partnership with China by opening up a Confucius Classroom within Birmingham City Schools. We'd like this to become a four-year program that culminates in an internship opportunity abroad. This pairs very well with the vision that the academy system has set out within Birmingham City Schools. And then finally, we'd like to be able to continue the support to our students even beyond the four years in our program by setting up critical language scholarships and foreign language area study opportunities and making sure that they are at universities where they will receive placement and support from administration and faculty there. Some highlights of our trip that we've done in the past and that we will look forward to this summer. We have a big focus in maintaining a connection between the past and present for our students. We want them to understand the cultural past of China and know how that affects our future, especially as U.S. leaders with China in the present. We look forward to visiting Chao Yang and maintaining and creating new relationships with this sister city. And finally, some of the more fun and day-to-day interactions with our students, going to the markets, shopping, knowing how to daily, do daily interactions with a new and diverse culture. And I'd like to now open up and introduce you to two of our students. We will have eight students with, going with us this summer. These two, Bridgette Williams, who's a student at Parker High School, and a recent graduate, Timothy Smith of GW Carver High School.
Ni hao, wǒ jiāo liumshu brigitte. Hello, my name is Bridgette Williams and I want to begin by thanking the city of Birmingham and sister city for this support of our program. This experience is so valuable to me. I plan to be an animator and a game designer one day and spend a lot of time in Asia. This opportunity has allowed, has allowed me to jumpstart my learning of this difficult language and allow me to have a leg up on negotiating, publishing, and deals in, in China for my animation, for my animations and games. Thank you again. Please, please continue to, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you again. Please continue to support students like myself. Xie xie. Thank you.
Ni hao, wǒ zhèn jiàot Timothée. And again, I'm a recent graduate from George Washington Carver and this is my second year of Chinese study. What drew me into Chinese is my taste for like new and exciting. I have taken many foreign language classes and passed them all too, but with Chinese, it's much of going back and like to their study of their history and with their foods. I would like to become a culinary arts teacher myself per se and going to China and trying all their types of food and getting to know how it was created and the background history of it would be very unique and very special to me per se. And but I want to thank you for putting our support into our classes and always being there to help, support us, to know that we have somebody room for us to get to what we need to get to.
And I just want to leave you all with this closing statement. This weekend I was doing some reading and I found a quote that I thought tied together really well, this beautiful partnership that we've got with the city of Birmingham and Birmingham City Schools. And it's from Paolo Ciallo and he said, "When you want something, the entire universe conspires in helping you achieve it." The city of Birmingham and all of our partners have certainly helped us with this conspiracy to make this opportunity happen for our students again and again, and we look forward to your continued support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Devon. Thank you, Bridgette. Thank you, Tim. Mr. Pro Tem, the city of Birmingham has set out on a course to become recognized internationally, to attract international businesses, to interact socially and culturally. I know our Economic Development Office is working on several economic endeavors, including EB5 and a number of other things, to reach out to the rest of the world, to bring businesses here. We want to be the beneficiary of that effort. These young people and their colleagues, they will be the beneficiaries and we are preparing them now to take their rightful place in leadership capacities, being able to understand other people, other languages, and to interact both socially, culturally, and economically. So I want to thank Devon, I want to thank Bridgette, I want to thank Timothy and all of your other colleagues who are on this endeavor and on this trip. China will amaze you, both from a historical standpoint and how modern it has become in the last decade. But it's not America and we have a lot to be proud of, but you don't get a great appreciation of America until you see other places. And you'll find that out in your own time and in your own way. So thank you all so much. Thank you. Today is Walgreens Wellness Day. This event will take place on Short 20th Street from 10:00 a.m. to 10, to 2:00 p.m. Activities include a blood pressure check, blood sugar check, cholesterol check, and other important health screenings. We encourage everyone to take advantage of this opportunity to check up on your health. Mr. Pro Tem, I want to bring up the kids from JJ Freedom Center. They've been down here once before, but I wasn't here and I want to bring them up. Ms. Thompson, if you could, bring them back up. These young people, you know, again, we're investing in the future and anytime we can encourage them and, and lift them up and give them all the, the love and support that we can, then, then we're just doing what we need to do as an adults. And I want to publicly thank these young people for giving of themselves and showing excellence and, Ms. Thompson, if you would, tell us a little bit more about these young people.
These children are from Birmingham City Schools. They go to JJ Freedom Center after school. And Ms. Walker, Ms. Gilda Walker, she came up with the idea and she spearheaded this program for the children. She can tell you more about it. I just come volunteer and help out wherever I can.
Come on, Ms. Walker. Good morning.
Mayor, council, residents of Birmingham, Habaragani, since we got Chinese, let's have some Swahili. Habaragani, what's the news? JJ's Freedom Center, Habaragani. We participated in the first Push Excel 2015 Speech Awards this year, first time in Birmingham. We have Illinois, we have Louisiana, and our children, most of these children have never done public speaking. And April 25th, they did a wonderful job. Today, we're going to do three poems. We had a request for "Hey, Black Child," so we're going to do that. The young, Tanaya Evans Edwards will do "Hey, Black Child," but for the contest, she will do "The Giving Tree" by Silverstein and she has memorized all of this. Then we will have Kayla Kane to do "Democracy" and Nikuria Thompson will do "Network." And they're very short, so thank you.
Tanaya?
Tanaya.
Tanaya. Turn, turn around. There you go. We got you on camera.
Hey, black child, do you know who you are? Who you really are? Do you know you, you, you could be what you want to be if you try to be what you can be? Hey, black child, do you know where you're going? Where are you really going? Do you know you could learn what you want to learn if you try to learn what you can learn? Hey, black child, do you know you are strong? I mean, really strong. Do you know you could do what you want to do if you try to do what you can do? Hey, black child, be what you can be. Learn what you must learn. Do what you can do. And tomorrow, your nation will be what you want it to be. Democracy. Democracy would not come today, this year, nor ever through compromise and fear. I have as much right as the other fellow has to stand on my two feet and own the land. I tire so of hearing people say, "Let things take their course. Tomorrow is another day. I do not need my freedom when I'm dead. I cannot live on tomorrow's bread. Freedom is a strong seed planted in a great need. I live here too. I want freedom just as you."
Network. I don't have to tell you things are bad. Everybody knows things are bad. It's a depression. Everybody's out of work or scared of losing their job. The dollar buys a nickel's worth. Banks are going bust. Shopkeepers keep a gun under the counter. Criminals are running wild in the street and there's nobody anywhere who seems to know what to do and there's no intuitive. We know the air is unfit to breathe and our food is unfit to eat and we sit watching our TVs while some local newscaster tells us that today we had 63 violent crimes, 15 homicides, as if that's the way it's supposed to be. We know things are bad, worse than bad. They're crazy. It's like everything, everywhere is going crazy so we don't go out anymore. We sit in the house and slowly the world we're living in is getting smaller and all we say is, "Please, at least leave us alone in our living rooms. Let me have my TV, my toaster, my steel-bellied radios and I won't say anything. Just leave us alone." Well, I'm not going to leave you alone. I want you to get mad. I don't want you to protest. I don't want you to riot. I don't, I don't want you to write to your congressman because I wouldn't know what to tell you to write. I don't know what to do about the depression and the inflation and the Russians and the crime in the street. All I know is first, you've got to get mad. You've got to say, "I'm a human being and my life has value." So I want you to get up now. I want all of you to get up out of your seats. I want you to go to the window, stick your head out and yell, "I'm mad and I'm not going to take this anymore."
And I could call any of these children up and they could present. And we're just asking your support. We're going to Chicago and we're going to bring some trophies back to Birmingham and we're looking forward to a larger group on next year, but our goal this year was to present it. Our director is Reverend Beatrice Cockrum. She's the director of JJ's Freedom Center and I don't know if she wants to say something, but she doesn't. But we just thank you all and we're thankful that we know that in order to be forgiven, we must forgive. Thank you for having us back.
Mayor? Mayor? Hold on one second. Mayor, we have a couple of speakers. Ms. Cockrum, if you will, line those beautiful children up and we'll have a couple of speakers to address you at this time. Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem, and I apologize for being late, but I understand the mayor brought you all, is that correct? All right. So I'm very happy. Every time I see children, they can articulate themselves and make eye contact and speak as well as you do. That's what makes a difference. I want to say to everyone that works with these children, continue to raise up this Joshua generation. Unlike the previous generations, we talk about all the giants in the land, but this new generation, they're saying, "We're well-able. We're well-able." And if we make the right investment in these children at a young age, give them the right exposure, that is key, the right exposure. They can get out here and compete with any other child in the world. And I'm telling you, I, I just, I saw a little lady right here when I came in and then the oldest one. I'm just going to tell you, that's how you, you win. You keep speaking, you keep talking, you keep using your voice to be a voice of influence. That's how you're going to change your community. That's how we're going to change our city, the state, and then this world. So again, I want to say thank you to all of you all. Thank you for the mayor bringing you before us. And I like this. I hope that I see more of this because this is the only way you're going to make news. If the only time that we see them is if they're killing somebody, stealing and anything else, that's what we have called to be our norm when that's not our norm. And we do have beautiful children who know how to speak, they know how to articulate, and they can make a world of difference if we just expose them to the world. Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you, Counselor Scales. Counselor Horton? Yes, wanted to say to Ms. Walker, and certainly to Ms. Cockrum, my colleague in the ministry with the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, but also to Ms. Thompson, thank you all for volunteering, and really, I was just, you know, just wondering that why we couldn't support you all. You know, in recent years, we have cut nonprofits out, but this is what you're missing out on, because these are the young folk who make the difference in our communities, and they're gonna be adults at some point. Now, we want everybody to give back, but I think the city has to give back too, and I would just hope that we'll find some way to support you all in your efforts in going to Chicago. I'm gonna write a personal check to help. I don't have much. I ain't got as much as the mayor, but I got a little something, but I'm, you know, but I hope if everybody pitch in, then look like to me. I see some corporate folk in this audience today, look like this is kind of stuff we ought to be investing in, because this is our future, and I was a little intimidated a while ago, because y'all are such excellent speakers, and quite frankly, this is the second time I've been intimidated today. This morning, I was intimidated, because I had to speak to the first graders, and I was just, you know, and I'm a preacher, and so I, you know, I just didn't know how to do that, but the Lord saw me through. I kept their attention about two seconds, but, but I just want to say, you all are doing a wonderful job. You're great orators, as Councilor Scales already articulated. It's just wonderful, and it's just good, and we didn't get a chance to say anything last time, because we had so much on the agenda, and I'm glad that the mayor, you know, made forbid. That's what grace is all about. It gives you an opportunity to do a do-over, and so you even, even today even did it even better. Is that the word that I could use? Better today than the first time, you know, so, I mean, it's resonating. It's resonating in my heart, so I thank you all for coming today. Thank the mayor for inviting you again before us. You did such an excellent job. Thank you, Ms. Cockrum, and all those people who helped you, your collective. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Hoyt. Councilor Tyson?
Kudos to everyone that helped, and I just appreciate that. I would like this young lady, how old are you? You're fourteen. I would like to take her with the Black Women's Roundtable and ask her to become a member up on our wing, and we have another event in August, and for you to be a part of that. And also, I will, I definitely don't have the money that Hoyt have, and I definitely don't have the money that the mayor got, but I do have a little crumbs, and that's all I'm living off of is crumbs, and I will help you with that, and I wish we could find some type of way, if nothing but to rent one of those buses, if the city could do that, to give y'all to go up there, and I would like to go, but I, I know I'm not, I'm just, I'm just, just one person, and I got so much, I mean, the problem with Lockway Guards, I can't leave the city, because my children getting out of school, and I got to try to pull guard shift over there, to keep them out from over there, so, but I will give a contribution out of my pocket, and it's, promise me it's with love, and if anything else I can do, you let me know.
Thank you, Councilor Tyson and Ms. Cockrum. I want to thank you all again. A lot of people don't know that you have put time, this energy, and effort with your leadership into J.J.'s Freedom Center, and the investments that you have made in the children in the western area of Birmingham and throughout the city has been tremendous. Ms. Walker, you've been a great support, the young ladies, and Ms. Thompson, your cry was heard last week, not only through your volunteerism in the actual community, but here today, speaking to the council. But J.J.'s Freedom Center has been a staple for a long time. I'm kind of sad that as the president, Protem, and your council member, I was not able to attend the end of the year program, but I also have my own children and my own family that I have to spend time with too, but I've been there before, will continue to support you. I just went to Chicago for the first time myself a couple weeks ago, and I'm forty, almost forty-two years old, and you will love Chicago. It is tremendous. I got a chance to hear Mayor Rahm Emanuel speak, and he's invested in education in a big way in Chicago, so there's gonna be some competition up there. There's some competition, so I, matter of fact, I heard Essence speak Friday, Jones Valley Middle Schools, eighth grade promotion. She did a poem, and it was outstanding, had everybody standing up in the gym there. But I just want to commend you all, what your efforts and what you're doing, and Councilor Robertson would also make a commitment to help support you in your travel and your endeavors to Chicago. All right, well, thank you all. Have a blessed day, and thank you very much. Mayor? Thank you all. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we ask that we suspend the rules, make a motion to suspend the rules for presentations.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. We have two presentations this morning. Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Council President, Protem Robertson. This is Principal Lumsey in Inglewood K-8 here. Have a special presentation with plenty of trophies here, and while they're coming up, and Principal Lumsey, if you can bring everybody up, I just want to let you know that at the NUSA Conference, there was a, the District Four did have an honorable mention, and so we'll be bringing Toby Richards, and the, and the, they did murals at, at, out at Patton Park at Shields Conference Center, so I just want to give kudos out, and they'll be coming before the council in a couple of weeks, but Principal Lumsey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Bring your greetings from Inglewood K-8 School, home of the Panthers. I have with some of our members of our girls soccer team, our girls soccer team, and our coach, Mr. Barlow. Our girls was fortunate this year to win their second straight championship, and so we wanted to bring them before the council and recognize them due to the late time in the school year. We don't have the full team, but we do have a good representation, so want to turn it over to Mr. Barlow, so he can introduce his girls, our girls, and talk a little bit more about them.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the invite. These young ladies have done an excellent job, second year winning championship. Only had two returning players from last year to be on the team last year, so for them to come with a new squad, to come together and formulate and work together, not only are they, are they good on the field, they're also National Junior Honor Society members as well, so I'm really proud of these young ladies. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Camille Goodman. I'm in the seventh grade, and I had a great opportunity to join the soccer team this year. This is my first championship, and I played goalie for, for a long time, and I just had a great opportunity to play that once again and keep the legacy going, and I'm also in the Junior Honor Society, and hello.
My name is Florida Emma Garcia, and I'm in eighth grade, and it was an honor to be on the soccer team this year and be able to bring home a trophy. It was also my first championship, so, and I'm in the National Junior Honor Society, so, yeah.
I'm in eighth grade. My name is Trinity T. Bailey, and this is my second champion, 2015 champion, winning. I played soccer last year, and when I go to high school, I hope to play soccer again to keep my champion winning score on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Artisha Moore. I'm in the seventh grade. This is my first year playing soccer, and I'm glad to be on the soccer team, I guess.
The girls are kind of bashful this morning, for some reason. You heard Mr. Barlow mention some of them are on the National Junior Honor Society, and these girls are true meaning of student athletes. Not only do these young ladies play soccer, they play softball, and in some instances, there were days where they had to play softball and soccer games on the same day, so I think that's very commendable of them to bring home that championship, but not only are they a part of the National Junior Honor Society, we have our eighth-grade valedictorian who's with us. She's part of the soccer team. We also have our Student Government Association President, who's part of the soccer team, so we have some, not only champions on the field, but we have champions in the classroom as well, so we're very proud of them. This is very big for not only the school, but for the Inglewood community as well, and I want to thank Councilman Parker for the invite and allowing our back-to-back champions to be with you again this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Lumsey, Coach, we have one, couple speakers. Councilor Scales?
Well, I do want to thank Councilor Parker for bringing up one of the other jewels in our city. I'm so happy to see these students this morning. I know we're kind of a little intimidating, so if you don't do public speaking all of the time, then you kind of get a little bashful, but congratulations to you, and the main important thing that I did want to say, that I took a mental note, the fact that you're playing soccer, that is an uncommon sport in certain communities like ours, and I just want to tell you that I want you to keep doing well at it, so you're gonna end up being the game changer, you know, and so when people think that Birmingham City Schools can't have soccer, do well at soccer, and particularly in certain communities, then you showing them that you can, and not only that, you are academically successful. That's gonna take you where sports will limit you. Academics will always take you over the hill, and I want to say to this principal, I'm always enthused by you. I think you do great things, and sir, I appreciate what you're doing as well to develop these children, and again, I keep saying, this is how the city is gonna win. You can't fight crime and the fact that we don't resolve conflicts well, as our chief of police tell us all the time, but if we keep on grooming them, keep on getting them with a different mindset, the sky's the limit for these children, so congratulations, students. Congratulations, Mr. Principal, and are you the assistant principal, sir? You the coach for the team? Well, no, you're not just a school teacher, you make a difference. A school teacher made a difference for me, Linda Parsons, so, yeah, you are a wonderful asset. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Protem, and thank you, Councilor Parker, for bringing them before us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Scales. Councilor Hoyt? Yes, just want to thank the principal and Mr. Barlow for bringing these young folk. Y'all are outstanding to be leaders, not only on the field. Now, I played soccer for about two weeks, and I got kicked in the shin, and so I, you know, I said, "You know what? You got to be real enthusiastic about this game," and, but I do know that it's a game that you got to be in shape to do, and so, and it's a great way to exercise and what have you, so I just appreciate your stamina, because soccer, you got to run the whole time. Nobody is standing up waiting on you to do anything, you just, you got to get it, you got to get that ball down to the next goal, so I appreciate you all and just being smart, young ladies, and bold, and taking your place in society. Thank you all for coming and sharing with us. There's some big old trophies, too. I never got a trophy that big, but, but I guess that's the way it is now, right? Big trophy, big win, right? Keep it up, and we're so proud of you all. Thank you all for bringing them here this morning. Thank you, Councilor Hoyt, and I want to commend them all, so I, I played football, but also played futbol, and there's a difference. In Spanish, it's futbol, it's soccer. I played up to eleventh grade. I actually had a couple scholarship offers in soccer. I was a halfback, played striker every now and then, but I decided to play football and play quarterback in college on scholarship, but I want to commend you all for your efforts, as we've had global presentations this morning with the young people from China. Soccer is a global sport, and you can travel the highways and byways of this world, experiencing the sport of soccer, and each one of you can do that, and you can always say it started right at Inglewood School, and your principal, Mr. Lumsey, and Coach Barlow are part of that process, and I want to commend you all for your hard work. I also want to commend Mr. Lumsey, who's also my constituent, for his leadership and administration through the school system, and what he's done to, to really elevate our schools and the Birmingham City Schools, and thank you for what you do and continue to do with our young people. Congratulations again, and let's go get another championship. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Councilor Parker, for your presentation. I have another presentation this morning with the Railroad Foundation, Park Railroad Park Foundation, also Executive Director Camille Spraklin. Please come up. As we watched the video that was presented by the mayor's office this morning, and you featured in there, you saw beautiful green spaces located downtown Railroad Park. That park has been tremendous in transforming our city and bringing many people together from all walks of life, and I know as I am, you are also, my colleagues on the council, excited about Railroad Park and what it's done for our community. They were recently acknowledged in USA Today as one of the top ten parks that have helped revive their city, and on behalf of the council today, I'd like to present to them a resolution of congratulations to their board, to their leadership, to what they've done as a community to come together to make sure we have one of the top green spaces in the country. So, it reads, "Whereas it is the custom of the legislative body to recognize the quality of life of the citizens of the city of Birmingham, that is greatly enriched by the availability of exceptional recreational facilities. Attended to such concern and in full accord with its longstanding traditions, the council of the city of Birmingham is justly proud to recognize Railroad Park. Representing parks at its best, Railroad Park has recently received national recognition. USA Today named Railroad Park one of the ten best United States parks that have helped revive their cities. And whereas Railroad Park celebrates Birmingham's industrial and artistic heritage at the site of Birmingham's founding, USA Today states, "This nineteen-acre park turned a former rail yard into a city showcase with outdoor event spaces, adult exercise areas, a central dining pavilion, and high-quality design. It's an outstanding transformation. The park is a joint effort between Railroad Park Foundation, the city of Birmingham, and a collaboration of public and private community leaders. And whereas serving as a catalyst for economic growth and development, Railroad Park has become a destination for both residents and guests of the Magic City. Held as Birmingham's living room, Railroad Park provides historically rich venue for local recreation, family activities, concerts, cultural events. And whereas past awards of recognitions include the Urban Beautification Award in 2014 from the American Horticultural Society, and the Urban Open Space Award in 2012 from the Urban Land Institute, and the People's Choice Best New Park in 2011 by the Daily Green. Now therefore being resolved that the council city of Birmingham, with Mayor William A. Bell C. in Concurry, does hereby recognize Railroad Park as an outstanding venue that stands as a resolute testimony to the role recreational facilities play in shaping the quality of life in this great city. Presented this twenty-sixth day of May, May two thousand, this twenty-sixth day of May 2015, at the recommendation of Councilor, President Protem, or James J. Robertson, Jr. Like to move the item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the resolution? Move the resolution?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, in the absence of my colleague and president of the council, Jonathan Austin, who's this- who this park resides in his actual district, we want to make sure we congratulated you all for your efforts and what you're doing to bring so much to the city of Birmingham through Railroad Park. Camille, you're hiding back there, I don't know why, but please come forth and please receive this resolution and share a few words. Congratulations. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you so much to our esteemed council members, esteemed staff members, esteemed, uh, Mayor Bell and his staff, everyone. Railroad Park would not exist without the vision and the foresight and the support of the city of Birmingham. And as we all know, anything worth doing takes a village. And behind me, you see the other half of the village. You all are one half, and here's the other half. There are some amazing staff people I would wish for them to step forward. Ms. Natasha Rogers, Reverend Robert Bearden, Ms. Shante Smith. We have an AmeriCorps member as well, Ms. Amanda Williams. And they do- they do the hard work. Also with us today are volunteers, and board members, partners, vendors, advice givers, and friends. And from each of us, staff members, we want to acknowledge them, because we could not do what we do without them. They are tireless, and they are enthusiastic. So we come to you today in humbleness and with gratitude, and we ask, um, stay tuned, there's even more good to come. We are excited about some future plans, and in the very near future, we hope you'll join us. Regions is putting on, uh, Symphony in the Summer, June 5th, 6th, and 7th, three free concerts over the weekend. So we, uh, we look forward to you joining us then, and we will continue, um, producing more programming to bring our community together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Camille, and thank you to all your board members, staff, and volunteers for what you have done. And, uh, the mayor will attest to this, and he spoke about it recently on CNN. Uh, I think due to the Railroad Park and what it's done for our city, downtown is seeing, uh, revitalization and growth to $600 million worth of development, uh, going on downtown, around the- around the area. So we want to thank you all for your efforts, and it is the entire community that makes that effort possible. Uh, and thank you for what you're doing in our city, here in the city of Birmingham. I think we have a couple speakers. Councilor, uh, Tyson?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, recognize, uh, Renee Kemp Rotan for the director of the master plan for the Railroad Park, uh, during the presentation. Also, she, you know, she helped raise the 12.5 million dollars of the city in public funds and supported the creation of the park. And I just wanted to just recognize her since she wasn't here, and that I go out to the park, and when I have friends come in town, I do bring them to the park, and the park is half in my district, and thank you.
I got you, Camille.
Thank you for the point of clarification, Councilor Tyson. It is a half of her district, too. All right.
Come on.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. President. Although, the interesting thing about staying around on the council for so many years, this is, I'm coming up on my fourteenth year, and, uh, when I first came into office, within, I think, two months, Bob Green and Giles Perkins showed up on the doorstep trying to get the Railroad Park off of dead center and moving again. Now, it still took four more years after that before anything started moving, but, you know, to have seen it just be a weedy, overgrown, dumpy-looking lot with some, uh, you know, wrecked railroad cars that had been scavenged by marauders, you know, to see what it is now from what it was is just fantastic. And to see the way it's just a magnet for people in Birmingham and from outside of Birmingham to come in and use the Railroad Park. And I think that y'all have done a fabulous job. You know, it's taken a lot of people back in the background, people, some people that are no longer even with us, but, uh, the Railroad Park goes on, and it will evolve over the years and become different things to different people. But, uh, y'all do a great job, and every time I drive past there, I think I should have taken another route. There's too much traffic, there are too many people over here looking for a place to park. So, uh, so it's- it's just- it's just more than I think anyone ever imagined it would be. And, uh, we had hopes, but I think it actually has been more successful than anyone dreamed, and I congratulate you on the job every single one of you has done, because it has taken everybody, plus some. So, thank you. Thank you for recognizing the Railroad Park.
Mr. Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listen, I- 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 I'm gonna travel down memory lane, too. But, uh, in the meantime, um, I'm gonna say a couple of things, because obviously you all are here to be congratulated on what you have, uh, successfully accomplished. And I, too, uh, wasn't a council member, but I will say that, uh, when it was just a little rocky place, there was a man, I- I- because, you know, I don't get hung up on who's here and who's not here, I just believe in giving everybody their proper credit. Um, and there was a man by the name of Larry Langford, and Larry had a dream. And, uh, and I remember, uh, because sometimes people want me to be ashamed of who my father is, my father did some very pioneer things in Birmingham, and I'm not gonna take back for that. And I remember, uh, when Larry came to my dad, he said, "John, I believe that we can have a concert downtown, right in downtown Birmingham." And my dad said, "No, man, you sure?" He said, "Yeah, I'm just telling you, John, I got this idea." And so the idea was to have a concert to show people, donors, and folk like Bobby Knight at Alabama Power, and all these folk who came a part of the Alabama Power Foundation. This is something that can come together. And so H.B. Brantley got involved, and everybody started putting these little puzzles together. And I remember Patti LaBelle was the first one, and the first comment she made was about the train. Of course, that's how I saw Councilor Hoyt and some of the other council members down there, because Martin Luther King III actually showed up for Patti LaBelle's concert. And so with that having said, uh, I do want to say this, every park in this city, if we make the proper investment, if we do the right things, can prosper. And we're gonna continue to advocate for Railroad Park, which is a public-private partnership. More importantly, we're gonna continue to fight for the parks in this city, because if every part of our city has a good, clean park, you're gonna be a magnet, you're gonna attract folk, because everybody likes to come to a clean, safe place that's very ingenuity. Uh, and I do want to say this very quickly, because I have a lot of respect for this lady, which is Sergeant Jackson. Always on the job, and if you think you're gonna come down to the Railroad Park, and as we say culturally, if you think you're gonna cut up, no, that won't happen over there. So I'm gonna say this very briefly, um, is that, uh, I do want to say publicly, because it was out there publicly, I meant it when I said it, I was upset, and Ms. Camille was too, but we kissed and made up, uh, and- and- and that's well for the park now. So with that having said, I wish you all the very best. Uh, and Ms. Natasha's down there, and she makes sure everything, and this other young lady, I know Natasha, okay? So nothing against you, but she keeps everything going, and she gonna make sure you treat the park respectfully and all of that good stuff. And I want to say to this board, continue on to stick together, work together, to make not only Railroad Park to be the green space of the country, but the place where people feel very safe and they can come to. I will say this very quickly, Mr. Protem, in closing, because I see my time has ended. Thought it was very interesting, because I want us, Mr. Mayor, to implement this in every park in the city. I didn't know that Railroad Park, until I came there over a month or so ago, that if you are seventeen years of age and under, you can't wear sagging pants. You cannot be admitted to the park unless you have a parent or legal guardian, and you have to show your license. I said, "Wow, I'm gonna look forward to seeing that at Grayson Park, Grafford Park, Macklin Park, all the parks in the city," because I actually like that idea. Uh-huh, and that's gonna help us to be able to cure some of the ills we have in our community. So congratulations, everybody. I'm so excited for you. You're looking at me like you thought I was gonna say something wrong. But, uh, I'm actually happy for you. Don't be on pins and needles, I just want to see a Railroad Park in a neighborhood near you. God bless you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Protem.
Yeah, well, yeah, uh, Mr. Protem, let me express my appreciation to everyone who's standing before us and the hard work that you've done to make Railroad Park an outstanding facility. Um, Camille and I flew back from New York together, and I think you went up to see the High Line. And for those of you all who haven't seen the High Line, you know, it, they're always comparing Railroad Park and High Line. In fact, Railroad Park has beaten out High Line in several international competition. There is no comparison. When you- when you see High Line, it's- it's a nice park, it's- it's a miniature park, it's- it's nice, but it does not compare, in my book, to Railroad Park, and we have something to be proud of. Uh, you know, having served the city government since 1979, uh, one day I'm not gonna write a book, but if I were to write a book, I'd tell a real story as to how Railroad Park came to a vision, came to be a vision, starting with the Rouse Report of looking at what could be done with that wasteland that was down there that separated the university from downtown. And all of the work down through the years, Sunday morning visits with a number of people, um, it transitioned several different mayors, but it's here today, and everyone should be proud of what has happened there and the stimulus that it has caused in this community, the excitement. Uh, it is part, whenever you hear anybody talk about the direction that Birmingham is going, they don't talk without mentioning Railroad Park. No matter what project, no matter what investment, it's the genesis of the renaissance of this great city. So I want to thank you all for keeping that alive and working so hard to preserve its integrity, to be a shining light to everyone to come to this city and be a part of the new renaissance of Birmingham. Thank you all. Thank you.
Well, um, let me say something, because I think it's a great park, it's the park my wife likes, so I have to say something good, uh, about the park.
Oh, you say something good.
I'll say something good anyway, that's right. Well, uh, but it's a place, sometimes, that we go, and we walk and, um, go around the park, it's a great place to be. Um, but I do think it's prudent to, um, to mention those, uh, you know, some folk planted. Uh, I didn't plant it, uh, but I did get a chance to water it, uh, and to see it, uh, come to fruition, uh, because I wasn't on the council when it was planted, but I was here when we watered it, when we paid for it and got it done. And, uh, and now it's a great, a great park, and it's, uh, it's a masterpiece, uh, to this city. It certainly has, uh, spurred so much of, um, development in and around, uh, downtown. I work about a block away from it, uh, from the park, and- and maybe I need to start walking over to the park, maybe I might lose a few pounds this summer. But, um, but it's a great, it's a great, uh, thing to have, and you all do an excellent job in running the place. Uh, I see, uh, my colleague, Ms. Sanders, um, they are the security there, and they've done an excellent job. Uh, and, uh, one of the vendors that I know, I also see one of my former colleagues, uh, who owns a travel agency, do I see you over there? Um, and I know he's excited, even though he lives somewhere else, uh, but he's excited by Birmingham, and so, uh, but we are- we are delighted, uh, that you all have come here this morning, and all of you, I can't call all of your names, but certainly want to thank you, uh, thank the president, thank President Protem for bringing you all this here this morning. Um, and I didn't know AmeriCorps was working with you all, I think that's wonderful. Uh, it opens up a world, um, for young people who are looking for opportunity, so we appreciate that as well. So, thank you all, thank the mayor, um, and to thank all those persons, uh, who had a part in it. I think you had to, uh, put some of that, uh, credit to Mayor Kincaid, uh, and Mayor Langford, and, uh, and then, um, the- the mayor today was on the council when we watered this, uh, park, and now it has grown up, it has, young folks, it has blown up. And so, uh, we are glad. It turned up?
Yeah, it turned up.
Oh, turned up, I'm- I'm trying to learn. Yeah, I told you, I struggled with the first grade this morning. Yeah, well, oh, well, turned up, okay. Well, you know, we have a vernacular, uh, Valerie, that we use, we say "blown," you know, it's good stuff. But anyway, uh, you all have done a great job. Thank you so much for being here.
Mr. Clerk, let's move the city race consent agenda at this time.
Okay. The consent agenda starts on page two with items two and three. Page three, we have items four and five on consent. Page four, there are no consent items. And then we skip over to page six, we have items thirteen and fifteen on consent. Page seven, items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one are on consent. Page eight, items twenty-two through twenty-six are on consent. Page nine, items twenty-seven through twenty-nine are on consent. Page ten, items thirty and thirty-one are on consent, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Do any members of the council have items that they would like to add or remove from the consent agenda?
I do.
Uh, Council Rafferty is first, and then Council Scales.
All righty.
Council Rafferty?
Thank you. Page two, I'd like to request item one be consented.
Okay. Uh, item one will be placed on consent.
On page five.
Let me object to that, I- I have a question, please. Item number one.
Item one will not be placed on consent.
Page five, items ten, eleven, and twelve.
Are there any objections? Items ten, eleven, and twelve will be placed on consent.
On page six, item sixteen.
Okay, there's an objection to item sixteen.
On page seven, items seventeen and eighteen.
Excuse me.
An objection to eighteen, but item seventeen?
There's been a request for withdrawal from finance on seventeen.
Okay.
Okay, so seventeen is withdrawn, and eighteen is not on consent.
Okay, on page ten, item thirty-three and thirty-four, and I was going to ask Council Abbott if item thirty-two needed to come to budget and finance.
Uh, yes, it does.
Okay. I'll let you handle that.
Okay, so thirty-three and thirty-four, are there any objections to those?
And page eleven, items thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven.
Are there any objections to those, uh, items being placed on consent? So thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. So I'll just read back through the items that have been placed on consent. Um, on page five, item ten, eleven, twelve. Page six, item fourteen. Page ten, item thirty-two. Excuse me, not thirty-two.
No, page six, item fourteen is not on consent. As well, I objected to. Page six, item fourteen.
Okay, I thought it was sixteen you can- you objected to.
It was fourteen and sixteen.
And sixteen.
Oh, and sixteen.
Yes.
Okay. Then on page thirty-three, uh, item ten, I mean, see, page ten, item thirty-three, page ten, item thirty-four, and eleven, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. Council Scales, did you have others?
Yes.
Thank you, Council Abbott. Uh, hold on just a moment, let me go back through. Uh, that's item, you got those two off for me. Item number eighteen, actually, if this can be answered for me, we can place it on consent as item eighteen, page seven. And it is, uh, endorsing the five-year priority plans. Obviously, this came out of committee of the hold that took place on the other Friday, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, because I actually wanted to ask some plans. So here's what I'm gonna do, out of respect for the council's decision, then I will go ahead and consent the item, uh, and then I can have my questions answered off the desk. Also, on item number twenty-six, want to remove that off consent, but it can remain only if we can find out, that's, uh, page eight, item number twenty-six, because I was just That's page eight, item number twenty-six, because I was just at the Boutwell, and I do have an interest in we're paying for roofing for a museum of art, but yet the air conditioning is not working at Boutwell Auditorium. And I know that that's not germane to the item. I just thought that I'd bring this to the council's attention. Okay? So, if you can give me an answer on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we are working on that. We ordered some parts, and they're coming in. We're gonna put them in soon.
Okay, 'cause it was very, very hot in there. I just want you to know for the graduation. So we can place item twenty-six on consent, back on consent, please. On item twenty-seven, I did have a question. If this can be answered. Didn't understand where Chichona Drive is located. I understand about this company, but where is this located, this Chichona? Is that in District Nine? Okay, all right. So let me go ahead and place that back on consent, 'cause I was gonna ask for it to be removed. Also, item twenty-eight, had a question about that. I'd like to have that removed from the consent agenda, page nine, item twenty-eight. Also, I'm assuming, and I heard the previous counselor mention, item number thirty-two, page ten. I'm assuming that that item will be referred to budget and finance. And I think that that is it, 'cause thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven are already on consent. Thank you, Ms. Protem.
Thank you, Council Scales. Any other council members who consider race consent agenda at this time? Mr. Clerk, need a motion?
Second.
That's Parker Lundey. Ready for the vote, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, one second. Okay, voting should be open. Councilmember Rafferty?
Yes, it's coming up.
You probably have to log out. Log back in. That vote should be up.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. If you had an item on the consent agenda, and it's already passed this time, you may leave the chamber. If you had an item that was on the consent agenda and has already passed with the vote of the council this time, you may leave the chamber. All right, first item, Mr. Clerk?
Should be item one. A rescinding resolution number nineteen dash fifteen adopted by the council January the thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, approving the application of Damian Rogers for an on- and off-premise beer and wine license to be used at McNolley Barbecue, um, barbecue in Fish, seventeen oh nine Fourth Avenue North, Birmingham, due to ABC Board stating that the applicant can only obtain an off-premise license.
Mr. President, I move approval.
It's removed by Abbott, seconded by Parker. Items before us at this time, any discussion? Mr. Horton, Council Horton?
Yes, is there anyone here to speak for against this item? This is a public hearing. Is the only applicant here? Okay, all right. Well, we're gonna rescind it.
Okay.
Okay.
Or, Mr. Chair, do you think that maybe we could consider delaying the item for a week or two? I'm interested in knowing if this particular individual was contacted about today's meeting. And I also had a question in regard to why are we considering rescinding this resolution?
And I would think of what it states. It says, "Due to the ABC Board stating that the applicant can only obtain an off-premise license." So the state is dictating.
Okay.
Is there someone else to speak to this? Mr. Thomas, do you have anything to say about this item? Am I, am I correct, am I? The ABC Board is stating that the applicant can only obtain an off-premise license.
Right.
Okay, so they have to take it away. They can't sit there and, and drink it. Okay, I'm just trying to explain to Council Scales. Right.
As a matter of fact, that, that's why I was asking, and then, Mr. Mayor, if you can, can authorize Mr. Bentley to speak, 'cause I, I think he may not have necessarily been participating initially, and it was 'cause he's busy over there. And there's nothing wrong with that, Mr. Bentley. So I, I'm trying to understand. I get what we're saying about the ABC Board stating that they only obtain this particular type of, the... Yeah, because what they're saying is that they can only obtain an off-premise license. My question is, does the applicant know that? Where is the applicant? I mean, you don't know where they are, but I'm saying, have they been notified? Do they know what the state is asking of them so they, they can even be considered properly?
Council Scales, I just got a text from my assistant.
Yes, sir.
She said, "This is administrative only," and that we shouldn't delay it.
Okay.
Okay, so it's administrative. This is just a normal course of, of action. I think Ms. Bernard might be familiar with. Are you familiar with Ms. Bernard?
Morning, Julie Bernard, Law Department. I spoke with Denise Hill, who's the person who's accepting the applications and processing these. I guess last week, we just had met casually in the hall, and she mentioned and asked about this. And I wasn't sure, I didn't know it was gonna be on today's agenda. But my understanding is, they came through, they got approved for an on and off premise, but when the ABC Board inspected the premises, they didn't qualify to have the on premise. And so the ABC Board will only give them the off premise. So Finance was coming back with rescinding this one, and will come back with one for the council to grant them the off premise license, which is what the ABC Board said they could qualify for.
Because basically, on premise is just what it is. It's kinda self-explanatory. That means that they can be able to purchase and...
Consume on the premises.
Consume on the property. And then off is just what it is, away from the property. So they have been approved to be off, but not on.
That's my understanding, is the ABC Board is okay with issuing them an off premise, but because we had processed them with on and off premise, we need to reverse our process. And I don't know why the applicant is not here today. I don't know where, like I said, I didn't know it was gonna be on the agenda today. But presumably, they are aware of what the ABC Board has told them they're eligible for.
Well, that was my only concern, is because if the applicant is not here, sometime I think that we may... Sometimes things, because people don't know, can kinda work to their disadvantage. And I was just wondering if they, if they knew that this was gonna be today, and, you know, what was gonna be their position on it. And certainly, if you're gonna have a resolution to rescind it, it's kinda harder to get up the hill than it is to maintain. So as long as you're saying that they are aware and that, you know, something else will be brought back before the council, I'm just hoping that this is not, you know, one of those situations. We, obviously, we gotta be in accordance with the state law. That's the end of that. But I'm just making sure that I understand that at some point, they will be contacted so that they can have the appropriate licenses, so that when they're asking, they know.
Well, I can offer, if the, if the council would like, I can, if you would like to table the item, I can go down to revenue and check and see what, you know, get a little more information on it, if you would, if you would like.
No, I'm gonna respect what the chair has indicated, but I, but I hope that you understand what I'm communicating to you, is that if these folk don't know, I'm just hoping that we will, you know.
Well, what I'm saying is, I, I do not know what they know about today's action being on it, and I'll be glad to go check in revenue for that.
Yeah, that just seemed a little strange, that's all.
Yeah, well, and let me just say that I would think that if they have rejected the off-premise license, then there has been a site visit, because otherwise, they wouldn't have been able to offer that or to, to abate it. So I'm almost sure they understood, and they may not know what we do here today, but we have to do by law, because they rejected the off-premise beer license, as I understand it. So I don't think there's anything that needs to be delayed, but we just go ahead and move on it. Because I'm almost sure they've been informed, yes.
And to your point earlier, this is not a public hearing item.
Right.
This is a resolution for rescension, and so this is just administrative action that we're taking place.
That's a courtesy.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right, I turn it back over to you.
Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote. That passes. Next item.
Should be item six. A resolution sent to the vacation at eight hundred square feet of air rights and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fourteen square feet of the block of four forty-one Alley that runs parallel to and between Sixth Avenue South and Seventh Avenue South, and perpendicular to and between Twenty-Ninth Street South and Thirty Street South on behalf of Boma Sada Birmingham LLC owners, so that the owner can construct the new metropolitan apartments in the hearing of all interested parties, case number two thousand fifteen dash thirteen.
Mr. President, I move approval.
It's moved and properly seconded by Abbott and Parker. Items before us, Council Tyson?
Yes, this is a public hearing. Anyone need to speak on this item for or against it, please come up.
Turn it, Tracy.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, my name's Tim Gambril. I'm the administrator for the city. This is a subdivision action, subdivision case two thousand fifteen dash thirteen. It's a resolution to determine whether the city council will give its assent to the vacation of the following, eight hundred square feet of air rights and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fourteen square feet of the block four forty-one Alley that runs parallel in between Sixth Avenue South and Seventh Avenue South, and perpendicular to Twenty-Ninth Street and Thirty Street South, so that the owner can construct the new metropolitan apartments, and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such right as they may have to egress and ingress from their property. The one-third right, the one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at a hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty cents on March eleventh, two thousand fifteen. The subdivision committee of the subdivision, uh, of the planning, of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council. And on April eighth, two thousand fifteen, the Public Improvement Committee forwarded this vacation to the full council with no recommendation. There was no quorum on that day. That's the report.
So, can we put a motion on the floor to approve the item?
Well, the item is before us already, council. So we just need to move forward with the vote. If there's no other speakers to the...
Nope.
Okay. Council Scales says she has a question.
Councilwoman Scales?
All right, thank you, Councilor. So this is to erect apartments, and it's on Thirty Street South. Is the applicant or no one here to speak on this item? Okay, yes. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm John Gilbert from Houston.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
John Gilbert from Houston, Texas.
Okay.
And I'm one of the partners in Boma Sada Birmingham LLC. And I'm glad to answer any questions y'all might have.
All right, well, good morning from Houston, Texas. All right, I do have a...
Flooded Houston, Texas, I should say. Flooded Houston, Texas, I should say.
Oh, flooded Houston, Texas. I got it. All right, well, here's my question. Is, obviously, these are multifamily dwellings. I get that. What, what will these apartments look like that you're trying to erect in this area? I'm interested in knowing.
Okay, sure. And as a matter of fact, I'd emailed all of y'all two weeks ago, the plans that we submitted and were approved by the Design Review Committee. It's gonna be a four-story, Class A plus apartment project that wraps a parking garage. We purchased the property from the Barber Companies last September. We, there's almost the entire block, there's two other out parcels that would not sell us the property, or would have asked for a vacation of the entire alley. So to make our project work and flow better, we, we have requested vacating half the alley, as we're gonna kinda build the project and wrapping like the entire block, except for a couple of houses, or businesses, I should say, that are there.
Okay, because, not you, sir, if you don't mind, just scoot over just a little... Yes, sir. I forget your name, though. I really do.
It's Tim Gambril.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Tim, all right? Even though I depend on you heavily. I think you know that. Okay, uh, so will this deprive other property owners if this is done, this egress and ingress?
Now, you should have a map. I believe you would have a map in your packet. But the alley, you know, remains open off of Thirty Street.
Okay.
And so those two properties that remain will still have access to the alley.
Okay.
And that's, that was the necessity for the air rights vacation, is because that portion of the alley is gonna remain open, and apparently, they're gonna have a walkway over the alley that remains open at that location.
Okay. Question for you also. Is this in alignment with the comprehensive land use plan?
It is.
The makeup of this, this particular property?
It is. They, yeah, and that's, you know, as Mr. Gilbert was describing, that they're gonna, you know, all the building comes out to the lot line.
Okay.
Uh, the garage is kinda contained within the building.
Okay.
And so, yeah, it very much fits the, the comprehensive plan.
One last thing, Ms. Protem, if you don't mind.
Yes, your time is up, Council Scales.
Can I have a suspension of the rules then?
Move to spend.
Move to spend the rules.
Second.
Hall in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Hall in poll.
Thank you, Ms. Protem. You're so dutiful. Thank you, sir. So here's, here's my question. Obviously, is this in your, your district, Council Abbott? Whose district is this in?
It's in District Five.
It's in District Five, so...
It's in my, no. No, it's in District, but this is Lakeview. Oh, it's in your district.
Okay. Okay, I just ate in Lakeview. Lakeview is growing, I tell you, by leaps and bounds. So, here's my question. This back to you, Mr. Texas. All right, so, in, in regard to these apartment complexes, this apartment complex, how many units will this be?
Three hundred and twenty, I'm sorry, two hundred and sixty-two.
Two sixty-two? And let me ask you something. What would you probably say would be the average rental cost in that? I'm just asking.
The average rent will probably be fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Okay, all right, because I, I noticed that Lakeview is repopulating itself fastly. And so I just wanted to be able to know what, what the... Because that tells me the caliber of clientele that you're searching for, which will also tell me the quality of the product that you're going to be renting.
We, uh, think it's gonna be the nicest property in town.
For fifteen hundred dollars a month? Amen. All right, I got that. You, you've answered my question, because the main thing was, I was looking for the quality of the product, 'cause I'm, I'm absolutely... You know, there's some areas that, in this city, that I think that you, you will be real well-served, but you gotta make sure that those work first. And, and as a Texonian, I just believe that you're a good investor. All right, thank you, Mr.... Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm making fun of it, 'cause most people know, or if, if, I'm sure the council knows, they know so much more than I do, that in Texas, one of the things that helped, has helped Texas to grow is their ability to be able to develop these multifamily dwellings, and which we call apartments. But it's the type of apartments that's what makes it different.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Council Scales.
And just so you know, my wife's from Birmingham, Alabama, too.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers to the item at this time? Seeing now, ready for the vote, Mr. Clerk?
Voting should be open. That vote should be up.
Item passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item seven, excuse me. A resolution assending to the vacation of seven hundred and one square feet of subsurface rights along Nineteenth Street South and Twentieth Street South, and two thousand and fifty square feet of subsurface rights along Third Avenue South and Third Avenue South Alley on behalf of Firestone Flowers LLC, Housing Authority of Birmingham, District Greek Orthodox Church of ETC, and Agent Investment Company LLC. Owners, so that the construction footings for the proposed downtown publics can be installed underneath the city right-of-way in the hearing of all interested parties, case number SUB two thousand fifteen dash fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. You have a motion?
Mr. President, I move approval.
That's Abbott and Parker. Items before us at this time, Council Tyson?
Yes, this item is set for public hearing. Do anyone want to speak for or against this item? They can come up. Have Mr. Gambril. Mr. Gam, I'm sorry.
That's all right. This is a subdivision, once again, my name's Tim Gambril. I'm the administrator for the city. This is a subdivision action, subdivision case two thousand fifteen dash fifteen. It's in a resolution to determine whether the city council will give its assent to the vacation of seven hundred and one square feet of subsurface air rights along Nineteenth Street South and Twentieth Street South, and a two thousand and fifty square foot, square feet of subsurface air rights along Third Avenue South and Third Avenue South Alley, so that the construction footings for proposed downtown publics can be installed. for proposed downtown publics can be installed underneath the city right-of-way, and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such right as they may have to egress and egress from the property. The one-third vacation fee has been set at twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. On March twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council, and on April eighth, two thousand fifteen, the Public Improvement Committee forwarded this vacation to the full council with no recommendation, as there was no quorum on that day.
Okay, do anyone, you can come on up, you wanna speak on this item?
I'm, I'm the engineer on the project, I'm with Zollis Strength. If y'all had any questions.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, David Rossen, twenty-one seventy-six Parkway Lake Drive, Birmingham.
Okay, do you have any question? Anyone have any questions? Counselor Skiles?
Actually, my name was not up, Counselor, but I do have a question. So, the ascension of this, this, uh, area? Mr. Tim?
Yeah.
Are we asking for the fee to be waived, or what is the fee?
Uh, the fee, I'm sorry, the one-third vacation fee is one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. But no, that, uh, to my knowledge, the, the fee has not been requested to be waived.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, my only comment, Madam Chair, is the fact that we, I hope that we have a plan to replace those trees you all cut down.
There is a landscape, hardscape plan.
Streetscape, okay, good. I didn't, um, I didn't see it on here. I saw it on the, on the Twentieth Street side. I see where there's an area that is noted to have, um, some vegetation, but I didn't see it on the Nineteenth Street.
It's just been completed, uh, last Friday, so that's why it's not there, but there's a strip along, uh, there are trees along Third Avenue and another planting strip along Third Avenue.
Okay, all right, all right. I just want you, I could, I could read the plans. I was kidding. No, it's good, thank you.
Any other questions, ready for the vote?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Ms. Clerk, we ready for the vote at this time?
Voting should be over. That vote should be up.
Item passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item?
Should be item eight. A resolution assenting to the vacation of two thousand square feet of unopened block, two twelve alley, and runs par- parallel to in between Fifth Avenue North and Seventh Avenue North, and perpendicular to in between Twenty-Eighth Street North and Red Mountain Expressway, US Highway thirty-one, US Highway two eighty, on behalf of Jerry Peters, member of WJJ LLC owner, so that the owner can utilize the property for outside storage in the hearing of all interested parties, and it should be case number SUB two thousand five dash sixteen. That's sixteen, not one sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and that's duly noted, uh, with that change on the actual case number. Um, we have a motion for this item?
Oh, Mr. President, I move, uh, approval.
That's Abbott Parker, mover and second. Items before at this time. Counselor Tice?
Okay, Tim.
Uh, this is Tim Gambrell, zoning administrator for the city. Uh, this is subdivision case two thousand fifteen dash sixteen. It's a resolution to determine whether the city council will give assent to the vacation of two thousand square feet of unopened block, two, two twelve alley that runs parallel to in between Fifth Avenue North and Seventh Avenue North, perpendicular to in between Twenty-Eighth Street North and Red Mountain Expressway, so that the owner can utilize the property for outside storage, and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such right as they may have to egress and egress from the property. The one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. On March eleventh, two thousand fifteen, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council, and on April eighth, two thousand fifteen, the Public Improvement Committee forwarded this vacation to the full council with no recommendation, as there was no quorum on that day.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Ready for the vote?
Voting should be over. That's from Skiles. That vote should be up, Mr. Chair.
Item passes unanimously, um, and Counselor Abbott had a, a moment.
Senior moment.
Senior moment, but we'll, we'll move forward. Next item?
Should be item nine. An ordinance to amend ordinance number ninety-nine dash sixty-seven, the creation of a trust fund for the City of Birmingham, Section Four, and amend Exhibit Eight Investment Policy Statement Incorporated by reference. And I need UC to entertain it today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clerk. This item is unanimous consent.
Mr. President, I move approval.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, now it's before you.
All right, ready?
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
I move approval.
Abbott Parker. Ready for the vote. So, we have a speaker to the item.
Okay.
Counselor Skiles?
Yes, I want further explanation, please, in regard to this item, and if someone could share that with me, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Yes, Counselor, the, uh, the ordinance currently provides for a, uh, mix between, uh, equities, stocks, uh, and bonds of fifty-fifty, not to exceed fifty percent equities. The stock market has performed so well in recent times that right now, we're currently over fifty percent, and we would have to rebalance it, sell stocks and go into fixed income securities, which are bonds that are not yielding very much. Also, if the Federal Reserve raises interest rates, then the values of those bonds will go down, uh, fairly quickly, so we'd like to just have a little more flexibility to not have to sell those stocks and go into the fixed income securities at this point in time.
I know, and you speak so low, I did day, Mr. Barnett. Um, so, basically, we're establishing this trust fund to be able to not sell the bonds that we would like to keep and hold until we so fit to use them?
No, the, the Birmingham Fund has been around since ninety-seven, I believe.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the Birmingham Fund, okay.
It, it has a, a portfolio of bonds and stocks.
Okay, but now that you tell me it's the Birmingham Fund, you're speaking so low this morning, I'm just trying to hear you. Okay, all right, so if we're referring to the Birmingham Fund, we're not reinventing the will, I mean, it's already there. Okay, thank you. You've answered my question, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Skiles. Ms. Clerk?
I have my.
Oh, Counselor Horton?
Yeah, um, Tom, if you could tell me, um, how often have we done this?
Uh, it hasn't been changed since it was originally set up.
So, this will be the first time that we've done it?
Right.
First time, I, you know.
I have a question, Ms. Pro Tim.
Counselor Skiles?
Okay, then with all due respect, Mr. Barnett, if this is the first and only time we've done this, and I'm struggling to hear you, and I, I really want to hear what you're saying, then tell me why are we doing this? If this is our first and only time that we've ever done this, may, we've ever done this action?
Because right now, we're at fifty-seven percent equities versus the fifty percent, so we would have to sell some of the stocks and put them in fixed income securities, which either are yielding virtually nothing, or you would have to go into longer-term securities that have market risk if the Federal Reserve raises interest rates. So, this is a defensive move, so we don't.
It's like you restructuring, so to speak.
Yeah, so that we, we don't, we don't have as much risk of market value loss, uh, through this action as we would if we have to rebalance into the short-term security.
So, what I'm gathering from you, this is a proactive action, so that that can help preserve our investment, for lack of better words. Is that, is that better?
Exactly.
Okay, 'cause see, if I don't know, the only dumb question is the one I don't ask. So, I'm never ashamed to ask a question.
Sure.
All right, you got it.
Thank you, Counselor Skiles. Ms. Clerk, we ready for the vote?
Voting should be over. That vote should be up.
That item passes with one abstention from Horton. Next item?
Item number fourteen, on page six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for legal services with Brussels, Amory, and Ross for the professional legal services to be rendered, in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, with the term ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, in connection with the CSX Norfolk, Southern, and BNSF Railroad Companies.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. You have a motion?
Uh, I move approval.
Abbott Parker, items before us. Counselor Skiles?
I wanted someone in the law department to explain to me exactly what we're doing, uh, for this particular item. I have an idea, but I'm not sure, so, is in conjunction with CSX, so what, what is that?
That's a lawsuit that, uh, the city's involved in over, uh, taxes, and this is, uh, a firm that specialized in, in this sort of litigation, so that they'll assist us in developing defense strategy. Ms. Pro Tim.
So, they?
Oh, go ahead.
We're getting this firm because, or we are acquiring this firm because this is what they specialize in?
And we need the specialty?
No, I gathered that, Mr. Bentley. Yeah, you rose to the occasion, didn't you? But, no, I'm, I'm joking with you, but nevertheless, I'm, I'm, uh, okay, so this is dealing with the tax issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Pro Tim.
Thank you, Counselor Skiles. Counselor Horton?
Yeah, the only problem, uh, with this is, we gonna end up spending a lot of money on, um, trying to do this. CSX got so much money, they can wait.
Right.
Till the cows come in, and it's a waste of money, and I'm not gonna vote on this this morning, uh, because I don't think we're gonna realize anything, uh, quite frankly, no time soon. Uh, so, um, that's what I feel about it.
Ms. Pro Tim.
Counselor Horton, you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Counselor Skiles, second time?
Okay, my, my last question would be, 'cause I, I know I'm treading, trying to tread very lightly. Is there a refusal to pay the taxes?
Uh, Counselor, this case is brought by all the railroads, uh, against the, well, originally against the state of Alabama and the city of Birmingham. Uh, it's a twelve million dollar liability for refund, which we obviously don't wanna pay, so, uh, the case for, against the state has gone all the way to the United States Supreme Court. They have sent it back to the Eleventh Circuit and probably be sent back to the local district for additional action. So, uh, the law department wanted to have an outside firm look at our case, which may have some little differences from the state, to come make sure we were identifying all of our defenses possible, uh, as that case comes back, 'cause, you know, it's such a large amount of exposure for us.
So, basically, we're, we are ascertaining this company, uh, or this firm, rather, to be able to basically see where the city liabilities or exposures are?
Yeah, and, and help us present the best possible defense against the cases when it comes back to the, the local court.
Okay. I will never work against the city's interests, so what I'll do is, in my incomplete understanding, 'cause I don't wanna say anything more, especially when we're talking about litigation, I'm not gonna say anything else, uh, yeah, 'cause I, I, it, it just raises even more questions. I mean, to be very honest with you, so, that's that. Thank you, Ms. Pro Tim.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Skiles. Ms. Clerk, we ready for the vote?
Voting should be over. That vote should be up.
Item passes with a no vote from Counselor Horton, abstention from Counselor Skiles. Next item?
Should be item sixteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a project agreement with Oxford Pharmaceuticals LLC, under which Oxford Pharma will build a one hundred and twenty thousand square feet manufacturing facility in the city of Birmingham to be located in Jefferson Metropolitan Park at the Lakeshore, on Lakeshore Parkway, where it will design and manufacture generic drugs, and the city will provide financial incentives in a total amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars payable in ten annual payments of ten thousand dollars each.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
That's been moved by Abbott, second by Lundie, Counselor Lundie. Items before, before us at this time, Ms. Cooper?
Uh, good morning, good afternoon, councilors. Uh, as presented, this item is a thirty million dollar capital investment project for the Jeff Met Industrial Park. Oxford Pharmaceuticals will be constructing a new one hundred twenty thousand square foot facility in the park, creating initially fifty-one jobs in year one, and the incentive and payment that is being requested today, it's for one hundred thousand payable in ten thousand dollar increments over ten years. That job creation should go from fifty-one jobs to a total number of jobs of two hundred within that, uh, by that ten-year period. I have with me today, Mr. John Schultz, uh, president of Oxford Pharmaceuticals, if you have any additional questions. Jeff Met Park also houses major companies like Southern Company, Wells Fargo, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and District Seven.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council at this time?
Well, my only question.
Counselor Horton?
Yes, since I see Ted back there, uh, is the county participating as well?
Yes, sir. This, uh, this particular project is going to be in the Jeff Met Park, which the JCEIDA manages and operates for, on behalf of the city.
Any other council members? Well, I wanna call on myself as the representative of the district. Uh, first, I wanna thank my colleague, uh, Counselor Lundie, Chairman of Economic Development, for his due diligence, and, uh, I was at the meeting when we had it with the Birmingham Business Alliance, uh, to come together, the mayor's office, and, and your support with the Economic Development Department, uh, Mr. Von Cannon, uh, for making this possible, and this will be additional two hundred jobs over time frame for our, uh, city, and we're certainly excited to have it located in District Seven. Uh, so, uh, moved from Huntsville, right, John? All right, so we're excited about that, and looking forward to create more jobs for our citizens within our community. Thank you. We ready for the vote, Ms. Clerk?
Voting should be over. That vote should be up.
Thank you.
Item passes unanimously. Next item, Ms. Clerk?
Item seventeen has been requested to be withdrawn, and then next would be item twenty-eight.
I think twenty-eight was, yeah, item twenty-eight.
A resolution accepting the lump sum proposal from Simplex Graneel, Irondale, Alabama, in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents for fire alarm system repair at Bill Harris Arena. This being the lowest and best proposal submitted, and authorized the mayor to enter into a contract with Simplex Graneel in substantially the form contained within the proposal documents, in accordance with said proposal, providing that the total compensation be paid under the contract not exceed the appropriation.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. You have a motion?
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Abbott Parker. Items before us, any discussion? Counselor Skiles?
Thank you, good morning again, uh, Ms. Pro Tim. So, what is happening with our existing fire alarm system over there at Bill Harris Arena? What's, what's going on with that, if someone can tell me?
Counselor, uh, we are required periodically to make, basically, inspect and test all of our alarm systems in all city facilities. So, we got there and do a test every once in a while, and we found some faulty parts, uh, so we repaired those, uh, but some of these, uh, parts are old, so we have to kind of upgrade this system to meet new code. So, basically, purchasing new equipment to replace existing fire alarm systems at, at Bill Harris Arena.
Okay, I do have another question, Ms. Pro Tim. Um, unrelated, but related to the same place. So, while we're looking at that, are we going to fix the roofing over there at Bill Harris Arena?
It's fixed.
It is currently fixed?
It's completely fixed, yes.
Okay, all right.
Good, Counselor Skiles?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we ready for the vote, Ms. Clerk?
Voting should be over. That vote should be up.
Item passes unanimously. Next item?
Should be item thirty-two, a resolution approving payment to Diamond Displays Incorporated during Business Heads Expo Displays Birmingham, in the amount of five thousand dollars for graphic design services, in accordance with Section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we send this to the Budget and Finance Committee.
It's been moved for a motion to send, and second by Lundie, Abbott and Lundie, to send to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, voting should be up. That vote should be up.
Item passes with one no vote from Hoyt. This item will be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next item?
Speakers are holding a new business.
I got one other item that needs to take action to vote. It's a travel item from Counselor Parker, from Washington, D.C. to New York. Total travel is one thousand, seven hundred, twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. We're taking it up as you see, Ms. Clerk.
Say that, I got a different amount. How much do you have?
I have one thousand, seven hundred, twenty-seven dollars.
Fifty-one.
Is that?
Fifty-one ninety-one. One thousand, seven hundred, fifty-one dollars and ninety-one cents.
Mine says something different, so...
Really?
Well, you read yours in the record.
Need to make sure it's the right one there. Take the higher amount, okay.
You might need some lunch money.
The one thousand, seven hundred, fifty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Made the twenty-seven through the thirty.
Yep.
All right.
We have a motion?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No vote, one no vote from Counselor Tyson.
That means...
It died. Okay.
I'm sorry. Well, did you declare the vote yet?
I have not declared. I did declare the vote. So, we need to make a motion to reconsider.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Item passes?
I mean, a motion.
We need another motion. Wow.
Move the item.
Yeah, because you gotta do a use...
Move the item.
Yep.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we need a motion on the item.
We need another motion.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Item passes. You're now making your trip, Counselor Parker. Thank you. Do we have a motion to suspend rules for speakers? Oh, I'm sorry. You don't do that on your speakers, report on your... All right, go ahead, Counselor Scales. Give me three minutes for Counselor Scales.
Thank you, Ms. Protan. I did have some things for the mayor. On Springville Drive, in the eight hundred block of Springville Drive, they're asking for the ditch to be clean, Mr. Mayor, and that area, also on Tenth Place Northwest. Excuse me, the address is seventeen thirty-two, Tenth Place Northwest, and asking for tree limbs to be picked up in that area. And also, Mr. Mayor, because I don't wanna take anything for granted. I'm sure other council members may have received this same telephone call. And this is in regard to if you can explain to me, and hopefully the council at large, in terms of there was a communication that was sent to the Birmingham City School Board. I know that my board member had folk calling me, so I don't know if other council members are aware about community schools not being funded, and so therefore the council is cutting it out and that kind of thing. Can you elaborate on that, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the content of that letter? Because I wanna know from you what it is as opposed to hearing other folk. Turn your mic off.
I'm sorry, not at this time, but I do plan on making a presentation to the council as they go through the budget deliberation. We have done an evaluation of community schools. There are some programs that are effective, and there are some questions in other areas. We wanna present a more comprehensive plan to the council, incorporating some of the ideas and concepts of my brother's keeper, all across the city, to have a more effective program that will constitute GED programs, job training programs, and a number of other programs throughout the city of Birmingham.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for giving an explanation. Now, I will say this to the council, Ms. Protan, and I'm saying it really on the dais for a reason, because I've had, even while I was running late this morning, got parents and PTA and PTO folk who are actually calling, and they are very livid, because board members are telling them to call us as council members, because we are supposedly cutting out this program. I said, well, who did you get the letter from? You got it from the mayor. You didn't get it from the council. So, you know, we have budget workshops, and I'm saying this where the public can hear us, because this is where you can come and speak to the council and the mayor about your concerns. Your concerns are legitimate. I've always supported community schools. But, you know, when people start calling you, and they're, and they're, we've gotten a lot of calls, Mayor. And so, my understanding is that the superintendent and school board members or superintendent sent home letters to parents over the course of the weekend. And so, that's the reason why they're beginning to call the council. And so, like I said before, I just believe you always go back to the offer of a letter or a comment. You don't just kind of get on everybody else about it, because the council hasn't even had the opportunity to have a formal discussion about what's what. So, I don't know if you all have had that experience, but I do know that several folk, including this morning before I got to council meeting, these parents are livid, because they said, we have no more Camp Birmingham. So, I just wanted to say...
That's not true. Misinformation has gone out. Camp Birmingham is different than community schools. The letter that we addressed to the superintendent was dealing with community schools, and the timeliness of it had to deal with the fact that if we did not give notification by a certain date, those employees within the school system would roll over. And it took such time that we have a full-blown plan to present. And, you know, we may end up doing it within the community school structure, what the plans are. But my evaluation is that many of the programs within community schools have not been affected. But that does not affect Camp Birmingham. But someone has spread into the myth that we're cutting out Camp Birmingham, and that's not true.
Well, and that's why I wanted you to explain it this morning, Mayor, because that's what the parents are upset about.
I think the question was asked about community schools and not Camp Birmingham. Camp Birmingham is a different issue.
I get that. I'm just trying to make sure I communicated to you, Mayor, that what's being said, not what you're doing, but what's being stated, is the both of them. I'm telling you, even the calls that I got this morning was with the understanding that Camp Birmingham is being cut out and being replaced by another program. And that's why I wanted you to say it this morning, because it's so important that people know what your intentions are when you did it. And I can't speak to it, because I don't know, but I don't want them to hold a council accountable, saying that, well, y'all cut our program out, and these folk are irate, and they mad, and they upset. So, that's why it's important, Mayor, when you get the opportunity, you know, to talk to them, because if you got board members edging these folk on to get on council members for a letter that they didn't even craft, then I think it puts us at a disadvantage. I think it even puts you at a disadvantage, because that's not your intent. Thank you, Ms. Protan.
Thank you. And any other budget items? I'm speaking to Counselor Scales. Give me one second. Any other budget items that you have, that you have inquiries about? The president did ask us to do the memo form to submit to his office for consideration. So, that might be one you want to submit for our consideration, our workshop. Counselor Tyson?
Yes, I have some complaints, but I did wanna say a few words about what Counselor Scales talked about. My personal cell phone was flooded with calls, and my house phone was flooded. And also, I had about twenty-five to fifty visitors over the holiday at my house, and I don't know, I don't know whether that's even legal or not, to come over my house like that about the community school, which doesn't, community school affects the after-school program. So, I'm one hundred percent behind community schools, because I know we need it over in our area with lockway guards sitting up there, and the children don't have anywhere to go. Of course, they're gonna go over there and play in the empty lot over there in lockway guard. So, I'm more concerned about it, I think, than anybody. I'm very worried about not having that program at Hemp Hill and Western Academy, because that's where lockway guards sit right there in the middle of that neighborhood, and it's gonna have me on pins and needles the whole summer, concerned about the children going over there and playing. So, I'm very worried about it. And I don't mind people coming over my house to give their concerns, but just don't come so many at one time. It makes me nervous when I look out my door and see twenty-five and fifty people, you know, and it makes me concerned, because I don't, you know, especially when you catch me off-guard, and I don't really know what you coming for. So, you know, just don't come so many. Then let me know, call and let me know, where I can be sitting out there, you know, waiting on you, whatever, be prepared, have my clothes on and stuff, and prepare for you when you coming. But they are very concerned about it, and that's something about when you live right dead in the middle of your community, when they have problems, they feel like you are, which I am available for the public. I wouldn't ever ran for this seat. But they come over your house more than they do call, so they feel like they are able to do that, and I welcome them. But just call and let me know when you come. And I do have some complaints for the mayor. I have a resident has been complaining about sixteen-twelve Alameda Avenue. They wanna know when the timeline for Public Works to come out and cut this lot, because someone got robbed. The guy was laying in the, on the ground where the grass had grew so high and jumped out and robbed someone that was walking exercise through the neighborhood. There is a drug house at fifteen-oh-one Memm's Avenue, and there has been a lot of shooting, illegal activity out, and pit bulls surrounded the house, and everyone is, are very scared about that. There has been illegal dumping happening on Fifteenth Place Southwest and Boise Avenue, right there on the corner. I would like to suggest that the whole street get a Be a Good Neighbor letter, because actually, I caught a person doing it, and they exchanged words with me, but I think the whole street just really need a Be a Good Neighbor letter. And also, I received a call about illegal activity at fourteen-forty-one Pearson Avenue. A lot of shooting happened last night. She actually was on the phone and let me listen to the shots, and it would just sound like Vietnam, like it was in a movie or something over the phone. And we need to do something about it. And about a month ago, when I was at, on a Tuesday, I reported a bad smell on Lom Avenue and Mac Milton coming from an empty house, and this right cross from the new walking track. And yesterday, they found a dead body in the house. And it had been there for about, about three weeks, about the time that I reported it, that it was in there. So, it was a dead body found in there, and it was a man. So, I think we really need to check these houses, like lockway guard, it's probably about, ain't no telling how many over there. Don't laugh. I'm serious. But we just really need to check these empty houses, because a lot of people are missing, and they might be in some of those houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tyson. Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, just, and I guess I got some of the same complaints with respect to the overgrown lots. I just wanna know, is there a schedule? Because my place is like a war zone. In Pike Road, the kids can't even go across the crosswalk, because the grass is three feet high. And it hadn't been cut, I don't think, this year. Is there a plan to cut that, this pattern? Somebody can answer that?
We'll let the director of Public Works address that.
Good morning, Counselor Stephen Fancher, Public Works. Yes, there is a plan to cut vacant lots and right-of-ways. Unfortunately, the resources that we have to do that have made it, you know, more difficult to do. We anticipate that when we bring on additional staff at the beginning of the budget year, that we'll be able to step that effort up. But in the meantime, it's, we've got another month and a week or so before we're fully caught up.
Wow. So, I guess we're being held hostage by the budget. I say a commentary, because these are main thoroughfares that need to be addressed, that have not been addressed. And, you know, before, you know, you know, when you all sold us on this, twelve hours, ten hours a day, however weeks they work, weekends, what have you, you know, we should not be having the same problems we're having now. And I know it's been raining, but, you know, but the grass doesn't go shorter, it grows taller. And it's, I mean, it's just, it's embarrassing when people, you know, I didn't invite anybody to my house this weekend, because heck, I didn't want to see all this tall grass coming into my neighborhood. It's not fair. I've been asking for the last three months. Lights are still off. It's dark when you get off the exit. I've asked for this, you know, but then y'all want us to pass a budget and do all this here. But, you know, we, people need to be held accountable. It's not fair. Now, this is not happening in every neighborhood. I do know that, because I've traveled to other neighborhoods, and they getting perpetual care. And you let mines grow like a war zone. Now, if I had to start taking pictures myself and taking the five minutes every two weeks to make my presentation on these overgrown lots, then I'd do that too. Because it's not fair to my, the citizens that are in the western side of town, they're not getting the kind of attention they need. Now, when I go to south side, when I go out downtown, the lots, the right-of-ways are cut. But I got to deal with this mess in my neighborhood. It's not, it's not, it's not acceptable, but I'm gonna raise the issue. I'll take it, I'll take it on my own. And I got a new staff person there. We're gonna be out riding, taking pictures, and we're gonna make some presentation, Ms. Protan, to this city, to our own city, because I want them cut. I want them cut. The other issue I wanted to make sure, because it was my understanding, Mr. Mayor, that my brother's keeper is a standalone program. And I've heard the same kind of concerns that other councils have heard with respect to that. And they said that this is gonna take the place of community schools. Well, I don't think we take away community schools. I'm not gonna vote for that. Now, brother's keeper is, I know is a president initiative, but I think there ought to be some money that's out there for the president to sponsor it. But I don't think we abate community schools. And Camp Birmingham does have some tie to community school, because they administer Camp Birmingham program. I know, because I saw the board.
Ms. Protan?
Yes, sir.
You know, there's been a lot of myths and rumors about what Camp Birmingham is or isn't. There's been a lot of rumors about what community schools is or isn't. My responsibility is to evaluate all programs that money goes into and the effectiveness of it. Probably one of the best community school programs you have is over at Avondale. I mean, I'll put that up against any program anywhere in the country. But then, when you look at some other programs, they're not as effective. Each day, I get calls as well, with people looking for GED programs, not just for young boys, but for girls as well, who have, for some reason, fallen by the wayside. When you keep on doing the same thing, you're gonna keep on getting the same results. We're looking at a comprehensive program headed up by our youth department, under Cedric Sparks' leadership, as well as partnering with a number of other organizations. This is the seed money. We expect a lot more money to come in through the My Brothers Keepers program, that we can address not only the difficulties that young men are facing, but young women as well. Someone had the myth out that community schools is mandated by state law. They're not mandated by state law. There is a program that the state provides funding for community schools, that the city of Birmingham school system has never applied for not one cent, not one cent. And it's available. There are a number of issues with community schools. We're trying to address all of those issues. But the main thing, I wanna have effective programs. Now, I would ask the council, before you make any decision, whether you take my word or their word or anybody else's word, go and look at the community schools in your district, and tell me if they're doing what you expect them to do, and then make your decision based on that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, are these announcements too?
No.
No, this is just concern, okay.
Concerns for the mayor.
Well, I hear you, Mr. Mayor, but obviously, you're the only one that knows about the evaluation, because I've not seen anything in writing that would substantiate the necessity to change community schools. And I think this council, if we're gonna have to consider this in a budget, My Brothers Keeper and all of that, I know acutely... And I think this council, if we gonna have to consider this in a budget, My Brothers Keeper and all of that, I know, uh, acutely, uh, what a Brothers Keepers is about. But I think, uh, this council needs to be informed, and there needs to be a presentation before this council. Now, I attended the initial, uh, gathering that you had, uh, I think we had it down in, down in one of these floors, I forget what floor it was. And, uh, we talked about My Brothers Keeper. But I don't, but I do know that community schools, and I put Park Community Schools against any other community school, because it, uh, Parker has done an excellent job, uh, with those kids. Um, I know that, because that's the member, I'm a member of that, of that board over there, and I know exactly what they do. And I know how important it is to have them within, uh, the community, and the impact that they make. So I just want you, uh, to know that, but we need, we need, we need, we need something quantitatively that would explain, uh, your, um, willingness to change something that you think is broke.
Thank you, Councilor Hoyt. Um, I'm gonna move to suspend rules for the speakers, I think we've each had a chance, those who wanna give a report to the mayor have done that, and if you have any other concerns, we'll address those at your time when you give your reports. So at this time, we'll suspend rules for the speakers. That's been.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
First speaker, Ms. Jacobs.
Ms. Jacobs. Good, good, good afternoon, uh, the mayor and the city council. I would like to announce that there will be a celebration, uh, Coach Jeff of Carver High School is gonna be Sunday, May the thirty first, starting at eleven P M. You know, he inducted in the Hall of Fame at Saulus Baptist Church, sixteen fifteen Folk Court in Birmingham. And, uh, we want everybody from the mighty Carver High School to come and contact Terry, uh, deal, uh, to, um, uh, the nominee is, uh, uh, seven three six forty-three seventy-six, uh, two-two oh-five sixty-three. So, Mr. Mayor, you don't be doing none this coming Sunday, at eleven o'clock, I mean, at, uh, Saulus Baptist Church, he inducted in the Hall of Fame. Want everybody from the mighty Carver High School, Barbara, Tom, Barbara, uh, Tommy, it's my president, so we want everybody, God, Barbara Gowne is our president, alumni. So we will be there, we're celebrating the Coach Jeff, you don't be busy, come on back. At, uh, Saulus Baptist Church, uh, this coming Sunday. And also, my, uh, we will be, we had a wonderful midday, Mr. Mayor, we told, Men of Pray told, also, uh, we gonna be at Great Amount Karma this coming, uh, no, four, four, June the fourteenth. If you get a chance, Mr. Mayor, come on by Great Amount Karma, June the fourteenth, eleven and three P M. And, uh, Great Amount, uh, Great Amount Karma, Men of Pray will be singing there. Also, my prayers go out to, uh, Gwen Thomas, Gwenny Vaughn Thomas, uh, Reverend Thomas, we had a service from, oh, um, uh, Pastor Oak Street, Ridded, uh, Riving, Living Water Faith Charity Church. My prayers are, um, for one of our sociopaths, lost his wife, and also, um, Ms. Franklin, Louis, Ms. Wal- Walter, Ms. Franklin, her daughter, we had that service at, uh, Grave and More Freedom Home. Everybody know Ms. Franklin, uh, Walter, Ms. Uh, yeah, William, uh, William Park, we, uh, need two letters for this, uh, for the, uh, service we had this weekend. Also, Mr. Mayor, we'll, um, Men of Pray, like I said, will be at, um, will be at, uh, on the fourteenth. And also, we gonna be singing on the radio, Mr. Mayor, W J L D, Mr., uh, we got a mail call, we gonna be singing at seven o'clock, so. It will, if y'all be, uh, listening at the radio on W J L D, uh, Oak Street, our own mail, of course, gonna be singing on the radio. And also, my prayers go out to my pastor, Reverend Martin Cullis, you know, he lost his mother, but I wanna say my prayers go out to his mother. And he holding on, he came back to church Sunday, but he just, um, just wanna pray for my pastor from the Oak Street family, they really turned out this weekend, so. That's all I wanna say, so I just wanna say y'all come on out this coming as Saulus Baptist Church, eleven o'clock. Coach Jeff is stuck in the Hall of Fame, in the Alabama Hall of Fame at Saulus, so, Mr. Mayor, y'all, City Council, y'all come on by William Park, all y'all, come on.
Thank you, next speaker, Ms. Clark.
Christopher Deramis.
Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Christopher Deramis, uh, District Seven, to the Pro Con President, City Council, Mayor Bell. Uh, we got some issues going on in District Seven that need some attention, Jefferson Avenue, what we're pertaining to. And it's dealing with the engineers, uh, Department of Engineers of Birmingham, they came out three years ago, after we had a meeting down at Loss of State College. With all the figureheads of Birmingham City College, making these amendments that we gonna do something about those flood zone areas. I went out and did the legwork on it. I found, got the Department of Engineers to come in, and they did their survey on that property, got approval to go down the backside to easement, where we are being flooded out on the backside by overexisteing of water. We got Jefferson Avenue itself, where water coming down from the hills of the people across the streets, water coming out of their drains, and nature of waters that's coming from the sky. Pouring onto the, pouring onto the streets, and being splattered into the people's house. Well, our drainage and our garage are being flooded, not only in the back, but we having problems all around our house and the front. And again, it kinda, uh, embarrassing, you know, be living in a beautiful city, looking beautiful everywhere else, but seem like Jermaine, your park and that flooding zone area. It's not just only in our areas, other areas, we're looking at between twenty eighth, Twenty Fourth Street, all the way down to, uh, Steiner. Off on Jefferson Avenue, that water is pouring, the drainage system is not sitting in the proper position, it's sitting on the side, water coming straight down. You go on Steiner, right there, industry to Steiner and Jefferson Avenue, there's puddles of water there when it rains. And the car, you get flooded out in that area, I was noticing it last week, the rain was coming up that high, with vehicles running into the right lane, pumping water over. We already have enough of problems, but these vehicles, they gotta go to and fro, but that water, it, it kinda makes matters a little worse. So we having problem there, and we'd like to get some help. The engineers, uh, gave a bill of about twenty-seven thousand and some more dollars. I sent letters out to District Seven, Pro Con, and I also sent letters to your office, Mayor, and, uh, the Department of Engineers also sent letters. To all the other figureheads that they had indicated on that letter that we sent. And we'd like to get someone to get involved and do something about this issue, because it's affecting that whole block section down through there, and it been going on for too long. We also have another issue that we've been trying to get with Public Works, dealing with the drainage, coming off Twenty Street, like I say, the water is missing in Mark. But you have a drainage over there by twenty-seven twenty-seven Jefferson Avenue, used to be Johnson Apartments, which is Maryland's Apartments at this time. And off on the corner, there's a drainage system, uh, there, it stands about this high, part of ground, underground, that high, up above, the water shoots in. But if you got boards, trash cans, and all that in there, it is not gonna pass, we got boards that can stay that long and taller than I am. And I have been calling that three-one-one, every time you look around, you getting disrespected on the phone when you talking, asking, and tell them about something. Like, you know, they looking at you like you the wrong one for calling, shouldn't have called, it's not your problem. That's all the community problem, 'cause that is contributing factor to that drainage, because if they ain't got no water to go, it gonna stay on that street.
Mr. Deramis, I'll ask you to wrap up, if you will. And, and to the, to his point, uh, Mayor, uh, he has been dealing with this drainage issue for three years, since I've been on the council. Uh, we've reported it, uh, in writing, uh, via email, a note to the proper departments to address it. And, uh, Mr. Deramis brought this up last week in, in the neighborhood meeting again, so if we get some attention, uh, somebody address that, that'll be, I know it's a flood zone over there, but, uh, we need to get that looked at, if you can, thank you.
Two things, one, I'm, I'm gonna have, uh, Mr. Bettis get with, uh, Mr. Deramis. Um, you know, the council approved funds some time ago for us to do camera surveys as to where all the blockages, and whether or not the system is large enough, and so forth and so on, we're still going through that process. Um, and so, we, we're gonna try to address that before, even before we finish, because we got flood problems all over the city.
Amen.
Um, in terms of, if, if anyone disrespect you, that, if you call anybody in this city government, and you feel like they disrespect you, let me know who they are, and we'll deal with that. Now, we've made some, uh, we restructuring three-one-one, it's now under, um, um, Mr. Carr's department, uh, within I T. Uh, you're gonna see some changes in the way we communicate within city government, uh, there'll also be some technology changes, that you'll be able to track whether or not your, your complaint is being addressed. Uh, but always get whoever's name you're talking to, and you got a right to be treated respectfully, and let me know who that is, and we'll deal with that internally.
All right, I thank you, Mayor Bell, but, uh, sometime that person won't give you your name.
No, they, they gotta give.
I, I ask you, of course, because, uh.
If you call and they don't give you your name, you call me right away. Because I have a way of, of being able to track who take what calls that come down there.
Okay. We thank y'all for y'all time, and we appreciate y'all gonna be looking into this matter, y'all have a nice and blessed day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Uh, Valerie Clark.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Valerie Clark, fourteen thirty-four Eighteenth Place Southwest of Birmingham, Alabama. Good morning, Mayor, Councilman. I would like to, uh, present the Michael Wilson Scholarship. Twenty years ago, my son, Michael, was innocent killed in a drive-by shooting at home. In Michael's memory, we have established the Michael Wilson Scholarship, and that's presented at two schools, that's Jones Valley Miller School, and that's Hemp Hill School. We have two of your outstanding councilmen who has supported the scholarship in Michael's memory. At Jones Valley, there was two winners, and they receive a plaque, which will be at Jones Valley in they, uh, front of they, uh, doorway, and, uh, and Hemp Hill too. They also receive a plaque, and they also receive a saving bond, we look out for the kid's future, and, uh, we have established that in his memory. At this time, I would like to call Councilor Jay Robison and Councilor Sheila Tyson to present this award to. And they didn't even much know that I was coming here, and that you have to give people their flowers while they live, and I believe in doing that. Councilor, uh, Jay Robison, this is presented to you and appreciate for your support. For the Michael Dwayne Wilson Memorial Scholarship, May twenty fifth, two thousand and fifteen. And Councilor Tyson, we wanna present to you and appreciate for your support for supporting the Michael Wayne, Dwayne Wilson Scholarship. That means an honor to my family and I, that they took the time, not only from their busy schedule, but they was also there with us when we presented, you know, the, um, scholarship to the kids. And it means a lot to my family and I, and we just wanna say thank you all here.
Love you, love you.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark, come here, please, and Councilor Tyson, I just wanna commend you for having the courage to stand strong. Uh, you really care about the children, you really care about the community, and you have, uh, exemplified that by this scholarship and honor of Michael Dwayne Wilson. And, uh, we just wanna continue to keep you in our prayers, and I've told you, ever since we started this, what, how many years ago now?
Three.
Three years ago, I was gonna continue to help support you in this endeavor, to make sure we help out other students at the middle schools in our city. So, we're gonna continue praying for you, lifting you up, and you can always call us if you need us, okay? All right.
I, I, I've known Valerie, we, we, I guess, all of our life, we've known each other, and I, um, I known her son very well. Uh, we was actually in a neighborhood meeting at the library, actually, when he was shot, they shot the whole street up. So when we was in the library, everybody was on, we dove on the floor, 'cause we didn't know where, where the bullets was coming from. And, uh, when we went out, her son was actually killed. And the neighborhood watch, uh, when Valerie gave the scholarship at Hemp Hill, I asked the neighborhood watch to help double the, uh, uh, the savings bonds. So they actually, uh, uh, dollar for dollar, what she gave, they gave the same thing, so. It was, it's just, it's a tragedy, what happens in the community, and it's, it's gonna take parents to come together and really realize that you are the key to the problems that we are having with our young people. And we've got to be more vigilant, and we've got to speak out more on things like this, and we just cannot just try to act like your district is perfect, and every time something happen, it's, it's, no, it's, that's your district. I know I have a problem district, I've lived in my district, and I've actually lived in my district. It's a difference between living in a district and actually living in the district. I'm very active in my district, and I could stand up against anybody, anywhere, in any part of the country, even President Barack Obama, I work in my district. And I care about my district, that's why I'm so concerned about Lockway Gardens and all the other empty apartment complexes, 'cause this is nothing but drawing crime to your neighborhood. It's just like ants, when they see places like this, everybody who wanna rob, kill, and steal, they wanna gather up in your district when they see places like this. This is why this blight got to be removed in order to save our children and save our community, thank you.
Had a comment, Mr. Pro Tem? Let me say, I'm so happy to see you this morning, Ms. Clark, and you always got a beautiful smile, and to me, this is how, um, you gonna keep your son's legacy alive. I think I've shared that with you privately. Uh, I know that the city now, uh, in terms of what we restricted to do, but I believe that we do what we wanna do. And, uh, and so, I'm hoping that you'll continue to see that light at the end of the tunnel. This is the way you're gonna change things, through education, and more importantly, presenting those scholarships. Um, I make no bones about it, I think sometime, uh, people may think, because we're on the eastern side of Birmingham, that we don't feel your pain. We feel your pain the more, because I'm from the western side, and we got a less, a lot of western folk right over there in District One, on the eastern side of Birmingham, and crime has no district. When your son or your daughter has been murdered, relative has been murdered, uh, stupidly, uh, then it has no district lines. So I want you to continue to keep the faith, uh, like I told you before, if you got to cry your way through it, just keep doing it, keep doing it, and as you continue to make a difference. I remember years ago, before I became a council member, and I was doing, uh, scholarships over there at Huffman High School, and some people said, you know, that was a very expensive gifts, LaShonda, that you're giving, and I don't think you know what you're doing. I said, well, so you got to remember, a girl from the hood understands, if you have limited exposure, you can tell me about all the books in the world to read, and so that that can give me an idea of what life is like outside of West End. But until I'm actually exposed to it, I really don't know it. So, continue on to do what you're doing, I'm happy for you, I'm very happy for you, and don't get discouraged. Don't let his dream of what he would have been at the age that he is today, don't let that go. Keep on doing what you're doing, I'm telling you, it's a blessing when these children, when they come back, and I have students who are almost thirty years old, and here, I'm forty-four, and they say to me, Mama Scales, thank you. I cried during the Huffman graduation, 'cause my students were hugging me, and that's what they said, thank you, Mama Scales, 'cause it's not the beauty of what you see on the dais, it's what these children know who you are, and on their day-to-day, everything they do, and they say, hey, Mama Scales, thank you. So, your day will come, and you'll reap a harvest if you faint not, okay? God bless you here, thank you, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilor Scales, and thank you so much, Ms. Clark, uh, we really appreciate the honor today. Uh, next speaker.
Annie Clark. Is it Annie Clark?
Annie Clark.
No.
Please state your name and address for the record, please, you got three minutes.
My name is Cedric Hatcher, I reside at twenty-three hundred Fifth Avenue North, good morning to the mayor, as well as the city council. I'm here again this morning, y'all, I know y'all thought I won't take out things, 'cause I got ate all that pig, y'all saying all that stuff, but I'm back again. I'm not here to talk about no lots, I'm here to talk about lives, I'm not here to talk about a building, I'm here to talk about bodies. I'm not here to talk about property, I'm here to talk about people. I think it's way more valuable than a building, a, a, a property, and, and a lot, you know what I mean? About two weeks ago, last time I stood here, we talked about I'm My Brother's Keeper. Man, I went and did a little research, who started the I'm My Brother's Keeper, whether Dr. King, Fred, Shutterwork, great men, Rosa Parks and all them great, uh, activists and all that kinda stuff, but they didn't start that. There was a man named Jesus Christ, you talking about a brother's keeper? He was the brother's keeper, the sister's keeper, the Jew keeper, the Gentile keeper, I mean, he kept them too. And guess how he kept them, he went where they were, he didn't keep them from our office. He didn't keep them by reading the newspaper, looking at Google and all that stuff they do today, and looking at the bad news. He didn't talk about them, he went and talked to them. Oh, I want to church to him this morning, Pastor, I hope you're listening to me. We can't continue to talk about these young people, we gotta go talk to them. Now, I don't come down here to be sarcastic and point fingers at no male, that ain't my intention, God know it ain't. You know what I mean, I've been talked about and little stuff, I don't care what you say about me. You can talk till your head fall off, that don't stop Bruce Sayer. You know what I mean, I'm gonna keep on coming long as God tells me to come. But I just wanna talk about getting interactive with these young people, you know what I mean? Christ didn't just pray for them, a lot of us today, we like to pray for people. I'm gonna be praying for you, I'm hungry, well, I ain't got no money, but I'm gonna be praying for you, that ain't gonna feed nobody. Jesus ain't stepping on mountain and pray, when he got through praying in that mountain, he came down, and he went where they was. When he fed the five thousand, he was right there with them. When the one with dish of blood, he was right there with them, y'all. We gotta get involved with what's going on. We can't be Puka and Ray Ray and Junebug Keeper by being down here with Dick Bob and Tom. I'm gonna get to that, that ain't no racist statement, y'all, listen, let me close. We cannot keep them by being downtown, we gotta go across town to keep my brother. My brother won't commit all the crime and doing all the crazy stuff if I'm gonna be my brother's keeper now. I can't keep him on Fifth Avenue and Second Avenue, I gotta go around to Fourth Avenue, uh huh, where the brothers hanging out at. Yeah, that's why I'm gonna really keep my brother, y'all, that's all I'm saying, we gotta get serious, y'all. I'm so tired of even some of them folks in them pool pit talking about how bad the problem is. Either you gonna be a part of the problem or part of the solution. I'm not down soliciting trying to get no money, I ain't even asking y'all to let me come on board with the brother's keeper, because I'm keeping my brother every day. When the cameras going out, Bruce Sayer walking, when the TV cameras ain't around, Bruce Sayer still out there. Let's get for real about this thing, in closing, Sister Scales, you made a remark to me about a couple weeks ago out there, about a month ago. You said, Bruce Sayer, don't think anybody listen to you, I hate to toot my horn, but let me tell you who been listening to me. I've been getting calls from Washington DC, New York, California, New Orleans, especially about that statement I made out here about a couple months ago. I've been hitting national news with that, you know it went viral, whatever y'all call it, viral, whatever it called, you know what I mean, I got national news with that. I've been invited to churches all over the country, but that don't toot my horn, I ain't out here for that, y'all. I'm out here because only if y'all know and I'm getting out here, any town you done been through what I done been through, fifteen years old leading a funeral, and a train hit the van, seven people in there, and killing everybody except for you. How about shot up, nineteen, get shot in the head with a nine, tell your family you're little today, I stayed in a coma forty-nine days. God brought me through that death, thirty years old, got married at the building right across the street. Come home, finna go to Miami, me and my wife, get out the car, go down the street into Tittville, tell me I got married, what happened? I'm on the ground ten minutes later, I got shot two times because I shot somebody, and they was over there waiting on me. Because I kept being hard-headed, number one, I reeked what I sold, because I done shot about half a dozen folks in my lifetime. Number two, I kept backsliding, and every time I backslide, he puts them on my backside. So, y'all gonna tell me I'm being my brother's keeper, I take that so serious, y'all, y'all just don't know. Because when it's raining, when it's hot, it's cold, Bruce Sayer out there, he out there. And not because I'm trying to get in front of no cameras, because that's my calling, and I'm staying in my lane. And I can't tell y'all about the progress if I ain't had the process. How I tell you I get two, but I ain't never been through. How I start a ministry, but I ain't had no misery. How I holler glory, but I ain't had no story. How I have a testimony, but I ain't had a test. How I have amazing grace, but I ain't had no disgrace. So, God said, Bruce Sayer, if anybody been chosen, it's been you. Because you'd have been, I'd have wrote a book about everything going on out in them streets, you know what I mean? Yeah, we need educated people and all that kind of stuff, but if you ain't been through nothing, how you gonna tell somebody about something? That's all I come down here and cry out, y'all. So, when y'all went to tell me I'm brother's keeper, I'm all for that now, but I'm ready to do it now. Now faith is, not tomorrow, next week, next year. I'm ready to put boots on the ground as a military and say, God bless y'all, thank you.
Next speaker, William C. Harrow.
My name is William C. Harrow. I live at fifty-eight hundred Martin Luther Avenue, Birmingham. And an opportunity came up for me, my training is accounting, but I had to learn law, at least learn, read the constitution, and understand the constitutions to know what guaranteed my rights as an American. But anyway, a great opportunity came up with the Birmingham Water Works Board. My water and sewer bills totaled out more than my Alabama power bill. So, I knew something was, you know, something was wrong, something was wrong with that. And, you know, being an accountant at work, you know, learn accounting, and understand it. I did an analysis on the bill, I noticed on my bill, each month, you know, I paid forty dollars before I even get a cup of water out of my faucet. And it can't be right, because Alabama Constitution nineteen oh one is a very strong document. You know, it's not respected much, but in the first thirty-six sections of Alabama Constitution nineteen oh one, my rights and all Americans' rights in Alabama are guaranteed. In section thirty-five, it tells us that the only legitimate means for government is to protect the people in the enjoyment of life, liberty, and property. That's the only end of government. Section one tells us that we're equal, and section two tells us that, you know, the power is in the people. And section thirty-six tells us that those first thirty-six sections cannot be changed. So, from that analysis, the Birmingham Water Works Board needs to be put, it needs to be dismantled. It is an unconstitutional entity. Because if I went to the gas station, and the gas station tells me that I've got to pay fifty cents per gallon before I pump my first gallon, you know, it would be wrong. And before I run out of time, there are only two constitutions that we have to adhere to. The police officers, the sheriffs, all of them, the judges, everybody in positions of authority, they swear to uphold Alabama Constitution first, and then the US Constitution. You know, that's it. And you can't be free and you swear to uphold something when you've never read it. When you have to ask somebody, am I free, or somebody have to tell you if you free. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Clerk, I had in writing a request from Council Rafferty to allow Diane Robach McNairan to come present and speak to us at this time. I'd like to motion to suspend rules to accept Ms. Diane Robach McNairan to speak.
All in favor, let it be known by saying, ah.
Thank you.
Thank you Councilor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Patton, President Protem, and councilors, thank you for having me today. Some of you know me as a spokesperson for the Birmingham Peace Project, and that's one of the groups which has submitted civil rights ordinances and made the suggestion for civil, excuse me, human rights ordinances and Human Rights Council for the city of Birmingham. And human rights are an issue which is extremely important to me, and I'm sort of a spokesperson for that at all times in my life. Therefore, it would be very, very remiss of me if I did not address a human rights issue in my own backyard. And that is the situation in Robach. I am a sixth-generation resident of Robach, and I feel like I can speak to issues there because this is my second time to live there. I lived there when I was a young girl, growing up, I'm not gonna tell you how long ago that was, or how many years since then, but I'm back. I'm living there again, and the changes in that community are appalling. And that's what I'm asking you to address today. We live amidst crime, excessive noise pollution, garbage in the street, drugs, when we are trying so hard to bring this community back. And I know that we could do it if we could just restart our Neighborhood Association. It came to my attention that it had not met in over a year, that the CRR was coming, but there were no people coming. And I do wanna thank the councilors who have sent representatives to those meetings, Kim Rafferty and LaShonda Scales. And nevertheless, there's no people at those meetings, and I heard about this in October, and I've been trying to restart it since then. And no one comes, we have a logo, we leaflet, we email, we go door to door. There are three people who come regularly, and I am told that that is not enough qualified quorum to elect officers. Nevertheless, we have scheduled a neighborhood cleanup, we have the litter crew, we have a fire truck, but we have no bodies. Robach is a dysfunctional community, and we need a special action plan to bring it back. And I am asking you formally to do what you can for us to bring back our neighborhood. If you do that, I can work on it, other dedicated people can work on it, and we can bring this community forward with Birmingham so that the whole city is equal in the way that it moves forward into the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Councilor Scales.
Hold on, Ms. Diane, don't walk too far, come on back. I'm glad that you came, excuse me, today, because you and I have spoken on the phone. And initially, Robach, a portion of Robach was in District One, and I did tell you over the phone, and I told you I wouldn't be two-faced, I said, if you did come before the council, that I would stand and support you. I have spoken to Ms. Kathy Perdue, who basically stood in the gap for when Ms. Melanie was out. And so, I know she has a desire to the ability that she can to work with the Robach Neighborhood Association, which by the way, was under Ms. Janice Allen. So, with that having said, there is some assistance that is needed in the area. And I'm gonna be asking more people to come from our community up here because for some odd reason, I think that people think that we have a very plushed community on the eastern side of Birmingham, and I think maybe once folk here, not only in the mayor's office and the council, some of the things that we deal with, which basically the city is dealing with, let me just say that, that people understand more of what our plight is. So, I just wanted to mention that because I had spoken to you over the phone. I know the deficiency that we do have with that Neighborhood Association because the truthfulness of it is once Ms. Allen couldn't no longer handle the meeting, we really haven't been having meetings. And so, we need to do some work effort in there, and I know that the mayor's office would be willing to assist you. I think just you coming and having a formidable discussion this morning will help the mayor's office to be able to help the Robach community and hopefully start that Neighborhood Association all over again, because we do need help, we need a whole lot of help. But more people that they come to the council meeting, and this is made publicly known, then I think that people will understand that we too, on the eastern side of Birmingham, are not making up little stories, but that we have issues too, and we're willing to work in order to make those things become better. So, I thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you, our meeting is the second Monday of each month, and I think we were redistricted a couple of years ago. That was before my time, and our counselor representative is Kim Rafferty. And we're happy to share, of course, with anyone who wants to help us. But we will be meeting the second Monday of June that precedes our neighborhood cleanup. I want to invite you all on June thirteenth. We have three members of our neighborhood who'll be working alongside the litter crew and the fire truck. And all three of us will be there, and if anybody else wants to join us, please do so.
Thank you Councilor Scales, Councilor Rafferty.
Thank you, actually, because I was elected officer of the neighborhood in two thousand eight, and sometime in two thousand nine, Ms. Allen just kind of fell by the wayside. And actually, there haven't been neighborhood meetings in five years. And Mr. Mayor, I know I've asked before what kind of action plan we could have to get this neighborhood back together because the CPP doesn't really address this unique situation of that the whole Neighborhood Association became defunct. And so, getting whatever quorum you have to have in there to elect new officers, if you've got people coming, when the meetings are being hosted by the CRR. So, the residents are coming on occasion, they're doing the best they can, we have volunteers, and I have another name for you that was sent to me this weekend, another person who wants to serve as a neighborhood officer to get it up and running. And the other problem is, is you've got a quorum in the meeting to vote on whether or not to dispense the, use the neighborhood funds, but the CRR won't let them take a vote because they don't have elected officials, but they don't have elected officials because they don't have enough people attending the meeting. And somewhere, we need to build this up from scratch, and then apply the CPP to how the Neighborhood Association's running. But this has been going on for a long time, and I've asked to work with the CRRs in trying to get the community back engaged, and now Diane's come back, and a couple of others have come back. And we just, we really need your assistance to get it back off the ground.
You know, oftentimes, issues arise, and people expect the mayor to solve everything. I get calls from people who are upset and concerned about things the governor is doing, and they say, well, Mr. Mayor, straighten it out. I understand that concept. This council had the opportunity to draft the laws governing the community and neighborhood programs. I don't know if in those bylaws and structure, there's a provision to reformulate the offices within the governing body of the neighborhood. If there's not, then I think the first step is for the council to go back and amend the laws governing neighborhood associations that will allow us to reconstitute the leadership in that community. And, you know, Diane, I think you have the drive and energy to do exactly that. Once we get the offices situated, then we can do some things to pump up, you know, the attendance of the community and things of that nature. It's a shame when people don't take an interest in their community. But for those who do have an interest, we gotta find a vehicle by which we can put them in the leadership position, and then build the support around that leadership. You know, we can't go in and impose the will of the mayor's office or the council office on the neighborhood structure because it was designed for you all to have say in your community. And if people aren't coming out, then there's an issue there. Ms. Allen has been out of commission, not just in that capacity, but in other capacities as well for some time now. And I think it's up to us to start rebuilding the community. But I think it starts with the council either implementing the call for the restructuring of the leadership there, or amending the bylaws that will allow new leadership to come into place outside of the normal election process.
Thank you Mayor, Councilor Tyson.
I wanted to tell her that I'm glad that you actually taking the initiative to do that, but I won't be able to attend the cleanup because I'll be cleaning up my own district.
Well, that's pretty important, I wish I could attend yours, thank you, thank you.
Councilor Rafferty, do you have one more thing?
Oh, I was just looking at the neighborhood map, and I was just gonna let Councilor Scales know that there is a portion of Robach that is still in District One, crossing Robach Drive, going up to... Okay, then maybe the map on the city page is wrong. Okay, thank you.
Thank you Councilor Raff, thank you Ms. McNairan. Oh, you did, Councilor, I'm sorry, Councilor Hoyt, I'm sorry.
Ms. Diane, let me just share with you what my folk did the other week. We had one of our residents to print some signs that said that the neighborhood is watching, and they're gonna be involved and what have you, but it sparked a whole lot of folk. And Bearview is one of those neighborhoods that is already well-attended, but we've increased our attendance almost by fifty percent because of those signs, those little signs. And I'll try to email the council so she can get it to you. But just those signs sometime will do the job, they're concerned about crime and other things, what have you. So, I think you get people galvanized around those issues, then I think that you might have a way of increasing their attendance. But those signs have been working, and they paid for them, and I think the guys sell them now for ten dollars apiece. And people are buying them and putting them in their yards. Yeah, and so, they take some ownership. So, I thought it was pretty. So I thought it was pretty ingenious of one of the members of the community of the Beavie Heights. And so they are concerned. Yeah, so you might want to try that.
Thank you very much for that suggestion.
Ms. Proteam.
Councilor Scales, second time.
Okay. And one last thing, Diane, I was sharing this with the mayor, is I know that Ms. Kathy Purdu has already spoken with you. And just for the council's edification, the issue is, is that you don't have the same people who come to the neighborhood meeting, meetings regularly. That's what your issue is. So I know that that was a concern as to figuring out how do we get those folk there consistently? And so that when you vote, you're having a general consensus of the overall community? So that's why I was sharing with the mayor that I know that Kathy has spoken with you and it's just a matter of the mayor and Kathy having their discussion first and then bringing you in on that discussion. Because I think that that's going to give him a better idea of what the issue is. I just talked to Ms. Purdu about this probably a little bit more than a week ago. And it's just about, like you said, getting folks out to attend regularly, which is one of the things that since we're coming up for budget time, I'm really hoping that we can reinstitute the neighborhood flyer. Because that's what used to have, would help people with their brush and trash pickup and when to know when the neighborhood meetings are and who were the neighborhood officers. But we don't have that resource available. And so people fell by the wayside, truthfully, only because of the fact they don't know when the meetings are. They don't know where to meet. They don't know the time. They don't know who the neighborhood officers are. So hopefully that's something that we can try to reinstitute. Because you know, I don't put nothing on the mayor's office that don't belong there. And if it belongs with the council, I'm also saying, well, the council's responsible for ABC as well. Does that make sense? So with that having said, I'm hoping that what will happen is that when the mayor gets with Ms. Purdu and then gets back with you, that maybe we'll be able to reinstitute that neighborhood association based upon people coming back on a regular basis.
If I may add, we do have three people who have attended five meetings, only three, but they are the same three.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. All right. At this time, we'll take reports from council members, Councilor Scales.
Thank you, Ms. Proteam. As always, I want to thank the citizens.
Three minutes, please, Ms. Scales.
I'm going to stay within my three minutes. I got you, Mr. Austin, today. I want to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. I want to say congratulations to all of my students who graduated on last week, whether it was from elementary, middle school, and Huffman High School. I was so fortunate to be with you. Mama Scales always loved her children and I'm very, very excited and happy for you. Also, I wanted to report, to make an addition to my report about that On The Way Spirits, this is to Mr. Fancher for Public Works. I read on the report that it said that they were located in the county, which is not true. That is the city of Birmingham and the city has cleaned off this lot before. Is On The Way Spirits located on Carson Road next to the branch, which is in Birmingham, which is adjacent to Redstone Neighborhood, and that is in Birmingham. So On The Way Spirits is in fact in the city limits of Birmingham. Once we clean it up, I am asking respectfully for the mayor and his office to then find those folk because we keep having that same neighborhood nuisance and it has become a nuisance. So I just wanted to make sure that I brought that up until your attention today, sir, that that On The Way Spirits is located in the city limits of Birmingham and not Jefferson County. Also, Wynwood Calico Ditch Project, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to bring that to your attention too, that it started behind two homes. It's supposed to be going all the way past Wynwood Baptist Church and the pastor Davis, he came back on last week to bring that to your attention because it's still flooding right there because we thought the project would extend beyond Wynwood Baptist Church. And I do appreciate you for coming back just to hear what I had to say. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Scales. Councilor Tyson.
Thank you, Proteam.
You're welcome.
Last financial freedom workshop will be at More Than Conquerors Faith Church on Saturday, May the thirtieth, starting at nine AM at the life center, the family life center. Please come, please come out where you can learn more about your financial freedom. This is your last chance to get your financial report and also get your credit repaired for free. The Disabled Veteran Chapter Four of the metro, greater metropolitan area will be having a pancake breakfast with veterans this Saturday, May the thirtieth, from nine to twelve noon. This will be in honor to Armed Forces Veterans Day. We're asking for all veterans that need help, any type of help that you need, this facility is open to the public. It's on twenty, it's two, three, eight, Second Avenue North. Two thirty-eight, Second Avenue North. You can come out on Tuesdays from ten to two. Also, they are open from six to eight on Thursday. We're asking for everyone to come out that need help if you're a veteran. Also, the pancake breakfast will be six dollars. All money received will be helped, will help, you know, to keep the facility open. On May the thirty-first, there will be a Magic City Smooth Jazz at the Arlington House. It was very successful last year. We're asking for people to bring out their chairs and their blankets and to come out and just have a great time. We will also have Tina Wilson performing. Come out and relax and just have a wonderful day. On June the eighth, at the JCCO building on Eighth Avenue, there will be Attorney Grigsby will be giving a report on the sewer lawsuit for the rape piers. It starts at five o'clock. So that's for you, where you can actually come and we're asking for the public to come. On June the nineteenth, from nine AM to two, Princeton Towers Senior Citizen Community Living and the West End Wellness Council invite you to a health and wellness fair. The goal is to increase health and wellness through screenings, education, promoting positive behavior and good choices. So it's open to the public. It is totally free. If you want to come out, if you're a vendor, you want to come out, if you're a volunteer, they are actually still looking for volunteers. You can call Janet Graham at seven, eight, three, thirty-two, ninety-two, seven, eight, three, thirty-two, ninety-two. Also, I would like to just recognize all of the veterans that was on Memorial Day. Chapter Four actually had a chance to do the tap ceremony at Montevideo Cemetery. And it was definitely an honor for them to be chosen to perform the tap ceremony. And it's a rigorous process of getting a chance to actually do that. Just everyone can't just come out there and do that. Also, in this Memorial Day, we've celebrated and honored all people that was killed in active duty in the armed services. So hats off and it's a moving ceremony if you have never been. Also, to actually see the names on the wall of the military people who actually gave up their lives to serve in the military. And I also learned, colleagues, that some people that actually was killed, they, some of them didn't even do a good three months. So if you have served one day, you're a veteran. And you have had people that served three months and they was actually killed in active duty. So they never did get a chance to, you know, to serve thirty years, an opportunity to do their four years or two years, whatever they served up for. So it's just an honor to be a military veteran and that will live with you for the rest of your life. Whatever you do, they will always recognize you as being in the military and it's definitely an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tyson. Councilor Lundey.
Thank you, leadership.
You're welcome.
Want to highlight the fact that on yesterday, on behalf of President Barack Obama and Councilwoman Terry Sewell, we presented a flag to Ms. Ann Mae Gason, the widow of Deacon Preston Gaston, in his honor. And we're able to give that flag to her on yesterday. As a veteran, he flew the flag in front of his store in Sherman Heights for forty-four years. He started that store on a twenty dollar investment and showed you what hard work, determination mixed with a little bit of prayer can do for you. And I was really excited. Commissioner Bowman, who is a general, Army general, he and his wife, Major Bowman, she runs the Junior ROTC at Woodlawn. They brought their color guard over and all the news outlets were there. And it was really a wonderful Memorial Day event. And as a former infantryman in the United States Marine Corps, it really did my hard good to be able to celebrate the service of someone who not only served in the military, but served his community with gladness. So just excited about that. Our PIO was there, so hopefully at next council meeting, we'll show you what we put together. But it was truly amazing, the cap, the flag that flew over the US Capitol. We honored Ms. Ann Mae Gason with that flag. And then left her with another flag, or left the community with another flag so that they could fly it on a flagpole that we had erected in his behalf. So you know, that's one of the good things, leadership, that you can do as an elected official is, you know, do good works. And you know, I said it on yesterday, all gave some, but some gave all. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to highlight our veterans on yesterday. Lastly, to the Vice Mayor, is it possible for us to get a, get a list of our trash, not trash, I'm sorry, our grass cutting for our neighborhoods? And here's why I ask, because we've got some of the hardest working folks in public works that you've ever want to see. And I'm excited about the work that our people do. Mr. Charlie Williams and his group do a yeoman's job on a shoestrings budget and to be understaffed. But now that we're entering into the budget negotiation process, Mr. Patton, maybe if the mayor's office came to the council and said, here's what it would cost if we gave you a monthly grass cutting schedule for ninety-nine neighborhoods. Here's what it would cost you if we did it as full-time employees. Here's what it would cost you if we outsourced that work in certain aspects. Imagine if we outsourced right-ofways. You know, I ride by Lake Shore Drive every day and that right-ofway, when you get off of Lake Shore Drive, looks like Legion Field. But they outsourced it. Imagine if all of our on-ramps and off-ramps and right-ofways were outsourced so that our full-timers could isolate on the twelve thousand lots that we got, you know? I'm just saying, I'm just throwing out stuff. But maybe if you presented, you know, here's what it would take in order for us to cut all the yards on a routine schedule. Here's what it would take if we did all the yards and we outsourced a portion of it. Here's what if it take if we outsourced the whole thing? And maybe those folks could concentrate on cutting our parks. Because our parks and a lot of our city places need that attention as well, that they do so well. But I think this is the time where you and the administration could present to the council what it would cost, what that plan looks like. And then we might be able to find the revenue, the ways to pay for those types of opportunities.
Mr. Fancher, when we, the Vice Mayor speaking, when we presented MoMoR to the council, what amount of money did we ask for?
Originally, Mr. Mayor, to fully implement MoMoR, it was five million dollars worth of equipment and then five million dollars per year for staffing.
What, what amount of money did the council authorize?
Two million dollars.
When you said earlier that if we had the resources, that impacted our ability to buy equipment and to keep personnel because we had part-time personnel working as well, did we not?
That's correct.
This morning, what were the documents that I signed?
About your new employees, additional employees coming on?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that won't impact what we're doing now. The point that I'm trying to make is, we presented that to the council. We've asked for the resources. Mr. Fancher has been very vocal about needing the resources to do the work. And we'll be happy to present that to you again. But we need to, I mean, if we're going to do it like it should be done, you're talking about in excess of the five million for equipment. And we have bought some equipment, but equipment breaks down and you have to replace a lot of, especially small engine equipment. But it's going to take ten million dollars to do the type of job that you all expect us to do on a regular basis. And we'll continue to present that to the council if the council want to take that up during the budgetary process. But that's what he'll need in order to get the job done.
If I could add one thing, the other part of MoMoR, which I think is the most important part of it, is we implemented a system that allowed us to use the equipment eighty hours per week instead of forty by working the employees seven on and seven off. We were able to utilize all of the mowing equipment, the trucks, the tractors, the trimmers on an eighty-hour a week basis. Now, the employees only worked forty because there were two separate crews of employees who used the same equipment. It also helped us reduce overtime tremendously. If you look at the difference in our budget from 2014 to 2015. So there were some, you know, some unique ways that we went about proposing the MoMoR plan. And if it were implemented, I think it would solve all of the problems that you're talking about with respect to right-ofways, vacant lots, ditches, alleys, everything that's seasonal in nature. In addition, chemical control has been one of the things that we've looked to step up by bringing on a herbicide expert who has worked with the EPA and has, will put together a program for us that will be acceptable in all communities. And we're excited about that. He'll be on board next month. And we look forward to implementing an aggressive herbicide program this summer. Ms. Proteam, Mr. Mayor, I think the timing of the recent middle of that would be now as the people are clamoring. I think if we saw that again in a robust plan, definitely giving us the opportunity to show folks like we do on our brush pickup, you could say, hey, look, you know, they're going to be here on Monday or this week, they're going to be here, next week, they're going to be here. If you could have a plan that could be formulated in writing, folks could see that it would answer and alleviate a lot of heartburn and heartache. So I look forward to receiving the revised MoMoR opportunity, MoMoR two point O.
To that cutting list, and then we'll resubmit the request from Public Works Department.
Good deal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Lundey. And I think we have a number now. Sounds like it's ten million again with MoMoR. And we need to figure out the council where we can find it and implement it. And I think there will be a census across the board that it's needed. Councilor Rafferty.
Thank you. And real quick before I go, because that was something that was on my list too. Mr. Mayor, is the five million, is that going to be on top of the four point six cut that they've got in the proposed budget now? So is that on top of that? Because there, I see there's a variance between last year and this year of four point six million. So is that in addition to?
Councilor Rafferty, the four million dollars is a switch from a hundred and four employees who are currently working in Public Works, who next fiscal year will work for Director Kevin Moore at Park and Recreation. So it's just shifting funds. That exact amount of money is going to shift from Public Works to Park and Recreation.
Okay.
And the responsibilities will shift as well.
Thank you. Thank you. That cleans that up right there. Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to bring two situations to you that are quite aggravating. With my PIC funding, I changed out, or I funded the, the fixing of the air conditioners, for lack of a better term, at Hawkins Recreation Center. They replaced the air compressors. We went there for a public hearing last Thursday night. I found out that the air conditioning units, although they've been repaired, do not work. What was told to Mr. Leroy Everson was that, oh, we don't have Freon. Now, if I paid and I have plenty of PIC money to put Freon, why would we repair a, an air conditioning unit and not put Freon into it? Now, Mr. Bittes-
Are you asking me or you want me to find out?
No, well, no, it's just, it doesn't make any sense.
Right, I agree with you.
Mr. Bittes said he was gonna work with Mr. Fancher and find out what was going on. 'Cause I've got plenty of PIC money to pay for it, but that should have been bidden the original project. But if I hadn't had asked about it when I was there, Mr. Everson would have never said anything to anybody. And they would have just been without air conditioning until the new budget came through and maybe somebody came back and offered him Freon. The second one has to do with the security gate reacting to the problem of reoccurring vandalism of firefighters' vehicles at the East Lake Fire Station. I appropriated PIC funding for a security fence months and months and months ago. And I know that the fencing is now supposed to be coming in in June, although I was told it was already in place. But I got an email this morning that said that there were not gonna be any gates in it. So my question is, if the firefighters are supposed to be parking their personal vehicles inside the security gate, why is there no gate? And, and again, I'm asking for your help to clarify what's going on 'cause this is very aggravating when we're, I'm trying to use what tools you're giving me to make things better, and then I get-
Well, first of all, Council Lady, you know, I'll get you an answer to that.
Thank you.
Text message or call. Anytime somebody tell you something like that. Because one, if we had a city employee at a park that knew that equipment needed Freon and he didn't say anything to anybody, is something wrong there? Two, how you gonna put up a security gate with no gate? I mean, logic tells me that somebody's not thinking. And so I'll find out what the answer is.
Thank you, sir. And last, those were just, they actually came up during council meeting. Otherwise, I would have said something to you, but I thought this was the perfect time to go off on this. Speaking about Memorial Day yesterday, Sunday, I actually went to the Step Stone Ceremony that is held at the Alabama Veterans Memorial Park off of four fifty-nine. And I did want to let you know, Council Tyson and Council Lundy, that no Alabamians lost their lives in action and on active duty since November. Because every, every time they have this ceremony, once in the spring and once in, in, in the winter, they announce who's lost their lives and nobody in Alabama has.
Thank you, Council Rafferty. Council Hoyt?
Yes, I think we call that God's grace. The Bush Hill Neighborhood Association meets on tonight at six thirty at Bush Hills Academy. Next Public Safety Committee meeting will be June the first, four o'clock, council chambers here on third floor. I wanted to thank the Brown Elementary School. The principal is Steve Brown, who happens to be an Alpha Man. But no offense to the others, Council Lundy. But they invited me to speak to the first grade this morning. Again, I was so challenged, I, I didn't sleep all night. 'Cause, you know, when you're talking to the first graders, you got to be on it, you know? And, but I told them just in case I didn't do well, I bought them old jump ropes. So they'd be jumping somewhere today. But I want to thank Ms. Glover, Ms. Perry, and Ms. Alexandra. Those are the teachers for first grade. And just want to thank them for inviting me and really challenging me because I don't have that gift to talk to liberty folk. But, you know, sometimes you, you do things you don't think you can do. And they reminded me that today. And so I was able to share with them a little story that my daughter had written when she was in the first grade, Maya and the Magic Marker. And so, and how Maya was going by, going by, you know, marking grass so the cows could eat. And I just kind of told them that story about Maya. And, but I also shared with them that Maya had in her mind that she wanted to go to Spelman. And, and I kept saying to her, well, you know, you keep up your scholarship, then Spelman won't be a problem. Well, some years later, she reminded us of that. When she had a scholarship to Alabama, she said, I still want to go to Spelman. So that mean I had to come out of my pocket, my wife and I. But, but I was telling them, don't give up on your dreams. Because Maya's dream is being an attorney, being a lawyer. And, and she'd never given up on that. Today, she starts with the Fulton County DA, an internship for ten weeks. And even though I told them that, I used to say to her, I said, don't you want to be a doctor? She said, no, that's what you want me to be. She said, but I want to be an attorney. So she is following her dreams. So I would encourage young people today who are listening to follow your dreams. Don't let anybody, don't let your parents or anybody get you off course. Go and be who you need to be in this life, and you'll be a happy person going forward. I do want to thank the Birmingham Urban League. Tonight, they have the State of the, of the Black American Forum, which is gonna be held at Brown Hall on the campus of Miles College. And they are presenting me with a Economic Empowerment Award from that organization. Want to thank Mr. Burns and, and they called her Lady Woo, but her name is Dana Woodruff. I want to thank them and that organization for considering me for such an honor. So I'll be there this evening and like my colleagues, we could to come. Yeah, 'cause Council Tyson is gonna be on the panel. I think the mayor is gonna be on the panel as well. And some others to talk about the state of Black America. And so we want to thank them for that singular honor. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Oh, I want to congratulate Council Parker. He has been recognized by the Clinton Global Initiative as an outstanding community person with respect to the work that he's doing at North Birmingham. And I think when our colleagues do well, we ought to celebrate that. And I want to say yeah. And really, that's a world honor. Because the Clinton Global Initiative is all over the world. So for him to be sought out with a singular honor, I think is, is just wonderful. And I want to say happy anniversary to Council, my, going blank.
Same here, Mom.
Council Lundy and his wife is celebrating twenty years of marriage bliss. And so that's wonderful. Yeah, it look like he got a tan or something. But, but we just say congratulations to them. Marriage is what you make it. I know I just celebrated twenty-five years of being a non-conformist conformist. So in other words, you, you do what she told you to do the first time eventually. So that's what, that's how you survive. So just say, keep it up, brother.
Thank you, Dad.
All right, wish you twenty more years. All right, and you got a birthday next month, don't you, and the mayor both, don't you?
Yeah, 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 next week. Thank you, Council Hoyt. Council Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The special called Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, May twenty-eighth, at four PM. It will be in Conference Room A instead of D and E because D and E were taken. And then, of course, the Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be followed by the public hearing on the budget that will be held here in the council chambers at five thirty, that same day, May twenty-eighth. We were invited last week to hear the mayor speak at the Jefferson County Mayor's Association at the Weston Hotel in Uptown. And Council Parker and I were there, and of course, Council Roberson was already there. And it's always good to hear the mayor tell people all the good things we're doing in Birmingham 'cause we usually hear the things that are going wrong. So it's always good to hear all that good stuff. On Saturday, the Memorial Day Fishing, Rodeo, and Bike Parade was held at Avondale Park. It was great. The weather was perfect. Lots of children turned out with their decorated bicycles and scooters and whatever else they had. And, and they gave away enough door prizes to sink a battleship. So if you have children and they like to win door prizes, they certainly should attend next year. They had some wonderful giveaways. On this Wednesday, the twentieth annual Rickwood Classic at Rickwood Field will occur. And I know Council Hoyt will be there since, I think that's still in your district, didn't it? But that's always a fun time. It's always good to see how, how Rickwood is holding up since the last time we were there. Tonight, Redmont Park meets at the Botanical Gardens at six thirty. I know Mr. Dawkins has gotten a copy of the same email. I got about the three racks on Carlisle in the same spot this weekend. And, you know, that's disturbing. I'm still trying to figure out which curve on Carlisle. It has so many sharp curves on it. And to Mr. Fancher, I am happy that you updated your website, but you still say that you pick up clear and green glass. So that needs to be fixed. And I am concerned about the aggressive herbicide application because I've been witnessing the county's aggressive herbicide application, and it looks like heck. And that's polite. Because once you've killed all the vegetation, then you've got brown vegetation instead of green vegetation. Well, personally, I would rather look at green vegetation than ugly old brown dead vegetation. So poisoning it doesn't make it go away, it just makes it turn brown. Now, admittedly, it stops growing too, but it looks awful. And, Mr. Vice Mayor, you are going to get me some information on that educational material that the city was gonna be handing out about how to prevent mosquitoes, and I still haven't heard from you. And, and I have one question.
If I get the emails.
And anyone who wants to answer it can answer, but I think it might be Mr. Fancher. If the rule is that you have to cut your downed trees into four-foot lengths, why does the city continue to pick them up in twenty-foot lengths? Because if we, if we continue to encourage people to violate the city ordinances, they will never obey them. So the question is, if the man with the claw comes and he picks up these giant pieces of trees and he breaks living trees while he's doing it because he's doing something he shouldn't be doing, should he not leave them one of your door hangers that says, you have to cut your trees into four-foot lengths or we won't pick them up? Rather than trying to pick them up and damaging the living trees that we still have? What is the policy?
Thank you, Councilor. I'd love to respond to that. The, the, the city ordinance requires that limbs be cut no longer than forty-eight inches. However, they're left at all sizes. You're right, some of them are twenty feet long, some of them are longer. There's, the ordinance also specifies how the trunk has to be split up. I don't recall what the exact dimensions of that is. But the trunk has to be split up so that it's not such a heavy piece. And you're absolutely right. We do a really terrific job of rewarding bad behavior. We do that. If we don't, we get so many calls to come back or that we missed something. And so it's, it's easier for us to pick it up the first time than it is to leave a limb that's longer. That's typically what happens, is if we don't get it, we'll get calls over and over. And, and, and so we take the path of least resistance. Pick it up while you're there.
Well, I know that.
And, and Ms. Abbott, let me, let me just add. We get calls all the time from people saying, well, limbs have been left out there for two months, three months. Part of the reason is because it's either mixed with other material. Rather, and so the limb loader can't just come and pick up all the other trash along with it. Even though we tell the public not to mix it, they do. The other issue is the size. Sometimes a crew will see something that's out of order, and they have a right to pass it up, and it sits there. But then they call you all officers and y'all send me emails saying, pick it up. And so we go ahead and pick it up. I mean-
Well, I thought Mr. Minnefield sent me the design of a lovely door hanger that y'all had created to tell people what the rule was. Now, I could even understand picking it up and leaving on the note and saying-
If you want us to put the door hangers on there, I'm sure in some areas we're doing that, but we, we will put door hangers on there.
Well, you know, my worry is just that people will continue to do what they're doing, you know, ha-
Let, let me share something else. Last week, Council Hoyt chastised the administration for the exit ramp there at Twentieth Street and the other area. We sent two crews out there. They cleaned it as clean as my mama could, uh, clean shit in us. Two hours later, two hours later, it was filthy. I get calls from people saying, why, why y'all don't pick up the trash? We do what we need to do. We're gonna continue to do what we need to do. And I wish I could take some knuckleheads and arrest some of the folks for, for the litter that they do. But it's just not possible. And so if, if I'm gonna be criticized on the one hand for not doing something, and then when we do it, we get criticized for the way we're doing it, I'd rather be criticized and get it cleaned up than to worry about all that other stuff. But if we got door hangers, we gonna put the door hangers out there. I've even asked for overgrown lots because sometimes people say, well, a lot hadn't been cut in three years. When we know that it's been cut like two months ago. Water hits it, boom, it's back up. To put signs out to say, we cut this lot on such and such a date. But that doesn't stop people from complaining. That doesn't stop people from doing the bad behavior. But we'll do all we can, and we will go out there and put door hangers when we spot people not abiding by the ordinance. The other problem that we have, we treat residents differently than we treat professional tree limb cutters. The problem, though, you have someone that comes out, hire themselves out as a tree trimmer. They tell the resident, don't worry about it, even though they're supposed to carry it to the landfill. They don't. And they've got the limbs out there in front of the house, and what do we do? The other thing is, sometimes you don't know if the limbs that are there came from that house or some other house because people dump in different areas. Not, not more than a block from my house. People, every week, people are dumping limbs, garbage and everything else. We put signs out there and they dump the stuff on top of the signs saying, no dumping. We do all of that stuff. My thing is, Mr. Fancher has asked for the resources. Mr. Fancher tries to run his off, his department in a professional manner. And we'll do whatever the ordinance calls for. But at the end of the day, you all react from pressure from the community. I react from pressure from the community. And if they see something sitting out there, whether it's a week or three months, they're gonna complain. And it's easy to say, well, just let them complain. But, you know, then we get nasty articles written about what the city's not doing and this, that, and the other. City's not out there throwing trash in the, in the, in the right-of-way. City's not out there dumping limbs that are not the proper size. But we have to respond to all of that, and that's all I'm saying in defense of Mr. Fancher.
All I want is the educational aspect of it to be added to the noneducational aspect, which if a person is rewarded for doing wrong, they'll continue to do wrong. Sometimes it's just ignorance. But, you know, the guy who picked up the twenty-foot trees broke a limb off of a perfectly good tree and left it hanging over the street. Now, that was pretty stupid. He also pulled up the entire curb in Glen Iris Park and took it away in his truck. He also pulled up the entire curb in Glen Iris Park and took it away in his truck. The curb.
Who 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 did that?
The Claw.
I mean, but who was operating it?
Somebody from Public Works.
Well, you know, just like I told the gentleman who got up there to say that somebody disrespected him when he called, and what I told um um Council Lady Rafferty about an employee that had information and didn't share that information, we need to know who who's doing this stuff.
And I'm sure this guy probably didn't know he did it, and I know I'm-
But he did it.
But but he did, and I'm gonna talk with Mr. Fancher about finding another granite curb and somebody coming and putting it back, and then everything will be fine. But it's just the educational aspect, and now I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Abbott, and we have four minutes left on the tape. So I'm gonna have to go ahead and knock out my quick announcements and then uh recognize our officers. Brian, just let me know. Um, the mayor and I usually come together on two occasions during the year.
Your birthday.
The Magic City Classic and my birthday. So I'm I'm just honored that, our birthday, rather, I'm just honored that we can celebrate our birthday together and hopefully we can come together more often and celebrate other things, and the city continues to grow.
Hey, you and Vulcan, you and Vulcan.
And Vulcan too, the ma- well, I don't know, the mayor likes Vulcan too. So we'll, we'll go hang out with Vulcan on on next Monday. So happy birthday to you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, and uh, it's always a pleasure to to celebrate that day. Uh, since I've been living, you've known me for a long time. So um, enjoy that. And today is, uh, we have Tarpley Neighborhood Meeting uh on Monday, June first. We have Powerly Neighborhood Meeting, Gracilla Heights Neighborhood Meeting, seven o'clock P M on Monday, June first. We have the Wesco Y neighborhood meeting. Um, today, Council Ra- uh Abbott, we do have our Planning and Zoning uh Committee Meeting at four o'clock. Uh, we have the Western Area Framework uh discussion along with uh some other items at four o'clock. Council Tyson, you have a quick announcement. We got like two minutes.
Yes, I do. I have uh the grand opening for Illerton and Cooper Green Early Headstore Childhood Care. It will be Tuesday, the twenty-sixth at nine A M. Uh, four thirty-two, Center Street North. And the one at Cooper Green is fifteen oh one Arthur Shores Drive. It opens on Tuesday at ten thirty A M.
Okay, thank you, Council Tyson. I wanna thank uh Officer Charles Lewis Downtown Substation for um protecting us today along with uh Frederick, Officer Frederick Burks from East Precinct for protecting us today. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Today's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.